Here.
Councilmember Sander is absent at this time. Vice Mayor Terry.
Here.
And Mayor Gatewood.
Here. If Adam is available, Adam, I'm gonna go ahead and have you read out closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I'm struggling with video for some reason. I apologize. Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session this afternoon at four o'clock and took up two items of business. One, it addressed a performance review for the city manager. And second, it took up the item of real property negotiations. In both, the city council received updates and provided direction to appropriate staff and property negotiators. Council took no other action, and the council does have additional closed session items to which it will adjourn after tonight's regular city council meeting.
All right. All right. Can I have the city clerk read the playback schedule?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, May 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Wednesday, May 26th at 7:00 p.m. The meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. A DVD copy can is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right. I'll ask everyone to join me in doing a pledge of allegiance. Open our hand of our heart and wait for Linda to put her flag up. Thank you, Linda. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The two republics, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Right. Everyone could bow their heads. Can we get Jennifer Larrett with the Church of Christ of Latter-day Saints for invitation? Go ahead, Jennifer. We see you.
Thanks. Dear heavenly Father, we're so grateful for this day, and we're thankful for the opportunity to be able to meet with the city council, and we are grateful for their efforts and all that they do for our city. And please bless them that they will be able to be led and directed to the things that they need to do for the city and for the citizens and take us through the state of safety. And we say these things in my son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. All right. Presentations. Siri. Go ahead. Have Siri give her first proclamation as a city council member. So everyone, watch.
Yeah, and I'm really proud. I'm really proud to give this one. So this proclamation is given in recognition of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 17th, 2021. Whereas, the city of Rancho Cordova recognizes May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is about recognizing the influence and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And whereas, the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce is a steward of the Asian heritage and culture that is helping to shape our Sacramento region, the people, businesses, and neighborhoods that continue to make us a vibrant and thriving community. And whereas, the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce provides its members opportunities to tap into a diverse network of business owners, community leaders, and professionals to help businesses succeed. And whereas, the contributions of the Sacramento region's Asian Pacific and Pacific Islander community is a diverse group with a broad spectrum of cultures and voices. And whereas, today, there are millions of Asian American and Pacific Islanders throughout the United States that through their actions make America a more prosperous nation. From the Chinese, to the Indians, to the Filipino, to the Vietnamese, to the Koreans, to the Japanese, and to the Pacific Islanders, Rancho Cordova has welcomed so many people of Asian and Pacific Islander heritage to our neighborhoods, our schools, and our churches. And whereas, together, we celebrate the achievements and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that enrich our history, society, and culture. We must also acknowledge that this past year fought growing challenges of increased discrimination and a global pandemic. Now therefore, be it result, the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby proclaim May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and encourages all residents to learn more about Asian American and Pacific Islander heritage.
Thank you, Siri. Yay. So I'd like to call on one of my favorite CEOs, one of my first ones I've ever worked with when I was working in downtown Sacramento, Pat Fong Koshida, the president and CEO of the Sacramento Pacific Chamber of Commerce, to receive his proclamation.
Well, thank you so much, and we are honored. The Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce and its board of directors wants to thank mayor and city council and staff for this honor. We certainly understand how important the city of Rancho Cordova is to this region. We understand you have tremendous amount of Asian and Asian Pacific Islanders that are citizens of Rancho Cordova. So we are so honored on behalf of our constituents. It's been a very difficult time, as you know, for our Asian and Asian Pacific Islander community. Thirty-eight hundred AAPI hate incidents have occurred since March. Thirty-six percent of those have actually occurred in those folks' places of business. So we have launched a national effort and a statewide effort, and hence my banner, so that you can see it. But we're calling it AAPI Strong California because we believe that not only the pandemic, but also this continued racism and inequity has really kind of shone a light on some of the disparities that have occurred in the AAPI community. So we're working hard with our policymakers and would love to work with you guys around some of these issues. But again, just want to say thank you so much for your leadership, and thank you so much for this honor. It is very much appreciated. And congratulations to our newest city council member and your first proclamation. And you know, I've been, I'm an old timer. Garrett's right. I've been around the block for 20-plus years and know a lot of these folks today on the call. I don't see Donald's face or David's face, but you know, I've known these guys for a long, long time, and Linda and I have been around the block quite a few times, Linda. We know. So just want to say thank you so much and really appreciate the honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
But before you go, I'm gonna do something real quick, and then I'm gonna let Linda finish up, because she has lots. I value what your group brings to our region. Rancho Cordova happens to have one of the largest Asian populations, and has were able to support something called the KP Plaza in our region. Not to mention, I decided to go ahead and marry a Filipino woman, because you know, what are you gonna do? And so I
Smartest thing you've ever done.
Smartest thing you've ever done. That's the easy bind on, if she's listening. Smartest decision I ever made.
Exactly.
Ever.
Congratulations.
And so we really appreciate your guidance and leadership and what you've done for the community. Linda?
Thank you.
So, yes, Pat, I really wanted to say something, something similar. You know, we are so, and thank you so much for being here tonight. We are so extremely pleased to welcome Siri to the city council. She has brought, she brings a perspective that literally encompasses thousands of new residents here in Rancho Cordova, and that's so important. And Garrett and I do personally represent, it may not look like it, but from, you know, from Garrett's wonderful wife, I have a daughter-in-law who is also from the Philippines. I have Chinese grandchildren, and we have grandchildren whose mother came from Cambodia when she was two, fleeing the Khmer Rouge. So we really do value our Asian American heritage here in Rancho Cordova. It began with the first and second and third waves of the Bo people from Vietnam in 1973, and it continues today, as you mentioned. So thank you so much for being here to be able to welcome this, to accept this proclamation.
I virtually accept. I wish I could hold it in my arms, but I'm so appreciative. And as soon as we get out of this lockdown situation and quit being virtual, that's definitely going into my office. So really, thank you so much. And again, you know, you guys are really, and I want to thank your staff. You guys are really our best in class. You guys are cohesive city council. You've always looked at approaching how you help your communities from kind of an economic, inclusive economic development lens, and have, I've always just enjoyed working with all of you for so many years. So congratulations again on a great job you guys are doing in the city of Rancho Cordova, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. That was awesome. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference by Zoom. If you do not, if you want to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hands. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and state the name of the community of residence. Under the provision of California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda. It can be demonstrated to be an emergency nature, or the need to take immediate action arose after closing the agenda. Stacy, do we have anyone that wants to speak?
Yes, we do. The city clerk's office has received a few written public comments, which have been distributed via email to the city council, and we have some in Zoom as well. So the first commenter who submitted public comment is Autumn Eberhart. These will also be posted on the city's website for the public to be able to view. We received a second comment from Donald Childs, a third comment from Lisa Pappas, and a, I think that's what I have for the public comment. We also have Zoom. So we have a caller that's called in from telephone number 1-916-205, and I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you. You'll have three minutes to be able to speak.
Hi. My name is Helen Willen Bashaw. I live at Ontario Grande Circle. I have two issues. In the past, I've come to the city of Rancho Cordova regarding the horse poop in the road. Well, under California Driving Code, if there's no designated horse trail, horses are required to follow the road, the laws of the road. They're supposed to be just like another vehicle. Well, we have a horse that just recently was walking down the bicycle trail, and our horse let a big pile of horse poop. So today, this is the first day I noticed it, and various groups were bicycling today, and because of where the poop is in the bicycle lane, the bicyclists have stayed on the street. So the rider of this horse is not following California Driving Code because cars aren't allowed to drive into protected bicycle lanes, so why is a horse being ridden in one? So we now have horse poop in this lane on Rod Baudray between Sierra Glen and Sterling is where this is. My, another issue with all the news media that's coming around about officers and their conduct with the public, I am the understanding that Rancho Cordova does not have a voluntary reporting of officer infractions. I would like Rancho Cordova to get involved in this because Folsom has full disclosure, and I feel that it will help the citizens of Rancho Cordova in the future and potentially help reduce litigation if we had the voluntary reporting of officer infractions. Thank you for your time.
The next public comment is from Donnell Cummings. Donnell, you'll have three minutes.
I just wanted to say thank you for recording the work sessions on Zoom. I appreciate that. And I just want to reiterate my interest in the putting together the planning commission once again. Thank you.
And our next speaker is Autumn. Autumn, I'm going to unmute you, and you'll have three minutes, oh, to speak as well.
Thanks, Stacy. Hello, this is Autumn Eberhart from Cordova Meadows. I'd like to thank the council for directing city staff to now record all Zoom meetings. This makes it easier for the community to stay engaged and informed. It was mentioned that this would only last a while. Meetings are taking place on Zoom. I would like to request the continuation of recording all city meetings when the council returns to City Hall. As mentioned in the previous public comments, after reviewing 20 other California cities of similar population size, Rancho Cordova was one of two that does not record all meetings. Eighteen other cities record all their meetings, including their city council regular meetings, their council special meetings, their planning commission meetings, and even their art commission meetings. Some of these other cities have made YouTube channels to make it easier for their constituents to find and view the reporting. Video recordings are not new technology. They began in the 1950s. I recently saw a friend call his car to him simply by using his remote. It self-drove itself out of a parking spot to pick him up. That's new expensive technology. The people of Rancho Cordova are not asking you to use new expensive technology. The data also showed that Rancho Cordova is in the minority for cities of our size that does not have a planning commission. So as many have requested before me, Rancho should reinstate the planning commission, and any further discussions related to the Civic Center and the CAF's property should be postponed until the commission is assembled. So lastly, I would greatly appreciate it at the next regular city council meeting on June 7th. Agenda items are included for the continuation of recording all city meetings when COVID restrictions are lifted, as well as when the planning commission will be reinstated. Thank you for your attention on these matters.
The next
Thank you, Autumn. And just so you know, Stacy, just so you know, we already decided to do all that for the recording of meetings, and they'll be available on the website when you want to find them.
Oh, that's great. Thank you, Garrett.
You're welcome. Next person.
The next speaker is FISA. FISA, you'll have three minutes.
Hey, FISA. Thanks for setting up the Viking.
Hey, guys. FISA Mogo from Lincoln Village. You're welcome there, Garrett. I did want to second Autumn's comments. I asked for clarity at the last council meeting regarding the recording of the videos, specifically the ongoing recording of the videos once we're in person. And so maybe the answer was a little bit vague, but I also was under the impression that we'd only be recording, including the special meetings, for the interim. So if you could provide like specific clarity on, once we're in person, will we continue to see the recording of special meetings as well as all regular meetings?
Oh, she's frozen.
That would be Anna.
Oh, the internet's down. Okay. All right. Is that it, Stacy?
That's all the public comment that we have via Zoom and telephone.
Excellent. All right. Let's go on to council reports. So I'm gonna start out with Siri.
Okay, so it was a pretty interesting and wonderful weekend. We started off Saturday with a bike ride with a city manager. You know, when I asked ours how many people he expects to turn up at the bike ride, he's like, eh, you know, maybe 20 or so. But we had more than about 100 people, right, Cyrus, that came out?
Yes, it was about 100. Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, when you have a charismatic city manager, you know, they came out and drove. I would really like to thank, you know, the Fifty Quarter TMA, Art, who helped, you know, he gave off his remarks and helped set up. There was Chris from Bike Labs, you know, who even checked my bike to see if, you know, it was set up right. Obviously, I'm not one of those who rides my bike every day, so I actually had to rest all of Sunday to recover from my bike ride on Saturday. But May being Bike Ride Month, you know, I was in there. So was Vice Mayor Donald Terry and his wife, and a lot of folks from the city staff. We also have the city manager from Sacramento join in. So it was a wonderful ride. It began on the Village Green Park, and it was a wonderful day to get your bikes out. So May's Bike Ride Month, so go on, get your bikes out, ride out. The other thing that I wanted to highlight that I did was I attended the Junior League of Sacramento event. There was a cocktails with councilwomen. The Junior League of Sacramento, you know, their vision is enhancing the well-being and future of the Sacramento community through the dedicated action of trained volunteers. And they were looking to have a diverse set of women in the political environment to come talk to their girls, because their charter is that it empower girls to be confident leaders through programming, you know, centered on self-esteem, character development, and educational achievement. So it was a very good panel, and it was a great discussion that I had with the Junior League of Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Siri. All right. David. Yeah, I do not see you. Oh, okay. I'm gonna skip David and go to Linda. Linda, how was how was the bike ride?
Yeah, thanks, Garrett. Sorry, I was not riding a bicycle. I was waving from the window as they went by. Actually, Garrett, the last time I've been on a bicycle was when we did that fake bicycle race out front in honor of the Amgen Tour.
I remember one of us took a dive on that one, too.
Well, remember that David was showboating and did take a dive.
Oh, no.
Okay, so this, actually, this has been a good
Showboating. Hmm. So let me Google that.
It was around in a circle.
Oh, that was good stuff.
Okay, so busy week. We had our two-by-two with Metro Fire, and they reported on their mobile upgraded health program, which is really important because it's been in the works for a while, but the idea is to put a mental health professional on their trucks so that they have an opportunity to respond to calls in a more comprehensive way. Garrett, I know you reported last time that you had attended the groundbreaking for Station 66. So some of the statistics from there, in 2020, they had 300 calls for service, but they expect to do 600 calls for service this year, and they anticipate having only a four-minute response time on all calls. And that's really, really important. That response time is what keeps, it keeps the house safe, and it keeps them from finding everything but the bushes gone. And that's a really important statistic. In the meantime, our Station 61 on Folsom Boulevard continues to be one of the, or the highest call volume. They had a 7% increase in calls for service this past year, and all calls except ambulance transports were up, but the ambulance transports were down because nobody wanted to take the chance to go to the hospital, which is not a surprise. LAFCO met on the 5th, and LAFCO was a pretty typical LAFCO meeting. The Sacramento Placerville Transportation Cardy, Joint Powers Authority, met, and this was really, Don laughed at this, but this was really one of the more interesting meetings I've attended with this group in I don't know how many years. It turns out that there's a coalition that has been working on a parallel trail for the rail corridor. And for people who don't realize it, this is actually a rail corridor that starts somewhere around 65th Street. It is the route of our train and our light rail, and it goes all the way up through Folsom and then down south to, through the Folsom Ranch expansion area, all the way out to Latrobe, and then up towards Placerville, and I think it comes to an end at Missouri Flat Road. But these people have been working to create a natural trail that is a part of that right-of-way, but it's something for pedestrians and bicyclists, and I don't think it's equestrians, but it's for pedestrians and bicycles. And they've finished significant chunks of it, and the idea is to make this a multi-use trail so that even though, even once they start the rail excursion trains again, and the pancake breakfast in Latrobe, they'll still be able to do the, people will still be able to walk and hike and bicycle along it. And they are considering the idea of using e-bikes. There was a good article in the paper the other day about the use of e-box, and that's definitely under consideration. Regional Transit met also, and the most important thing about Regional Transit was that they are really trying to come up with a source of funding so that they can make free rides for school kids free in perpetuity, or at least for the significant future. They do this in a few cities. David, you might remember, we saw this in Nashville, and they really want to, they really want to be able to bring it to our region as well. We had a very well-received workshop on Measure R and the potential expenditure strategies, and as everyone said, it was recorded and is available for people to review. I also attended, and if you haven't, if you haven't been by and seen it, you need to go look. Everybody is familiar with B&amp;J Auto Body on Kilgore Road, just south of the Boulevard. One of our local artists, Robin Warrior, did a stained glass mural on the side of the building to highlight first responders. And so she's depicted not only firefighters and our public safety component, but also healthcare workers. It was lovely. Garrett was the master of ceremonies, and he can talk more about that. We had a really nice turnout. I appreciated that. And then they did an E-Ways. The Chamber ambassadors did an E-Ways thing on Saturday morning, and I took a bunch of anonymous electronic something or others over there to give to them as a fundraiser for their, for the ambassadors organization. And then finally, we're probably remiss in not previously adjourning in the memory of Dell Haven. Dell was a wonderful gentleman who passed away a couple of weeks ago at the age of 90. He was an original businessperson in Eldorado Hills, helped to start the Eldorado Hills Chamber of Commerce, and was extremely successful in his Union 76 gas station and a variety of other businesses. And we want, and yes, it's Kurt's dad, and we want to adjourn in his memory tonight. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, Linda. I'm gonna go back to David Sander.
Yes. Thank you, Linda, for recognizing Kurt's dad. He was really a grand guy, someone you would just really enjoy spending time with, and he could tell stories of this region and this quarter going way back, which was kind of, kind of fun to hear. And he could tell stories of this region and this quarter going way back, which was kind of, uh, kind of fun to hear. Uh, let's see, we have, the city has publicly announced our Purple Air Network is up and running. I'm not quite sure how many stations we've got out there, Cyrus, it's eleven, or something like that, some number like that. That are now, uh-
It's close to twelve, yeah.
Twelve, uh, that are now deployed around the city. And I have gotten some positive feedback from the original constituents who were, who were interested in pursuing this. So, well in time for fire season and and summer heat. I think actually last week was the first air quality warning I think I saw go out from the air district for this, uh, this season. So, we are well deployed, what I love about this is how it actually happened. You know, and that residents, uh, contacted us and said, hey, we don't have this Purple Air Network, everybody refers to, we don't have any of those, and we just had a handful, I think. And smud, I think they have had all of the at their site, maybe there's one other. And so as a city, rather than, uh, ignore it, because it was a citizen one, or rather than just go out and buy a bunch of them ourselves and put them on our own, you know, traffic signals or something like that, we asked, how many residents are interested in hosting one? We picked a bunch of neighborhoods so as to disperse them, uh, purchased them to knock down the barrier to getting them deployed, and then people put them up. And the the beauty of that is the residents who care most about it are doing, getting to do something about it. The city didn't do it all, or tried to do it all, uh, rather let the residents do it, but we did take care of the big barrier which was buying the censors. So, now we've got the citizen-led initiative facilitated by the city that is gonna yield rewards for us in this coming fire season. So, congrats to everybody involved in that, I think that was just a great, great thing in our city. Uh, the track meets that we've spoken about before are moving forward, I'm spending a bit of time on this trying to assist them along. It appears that Cordova High is gonna be the beneficiary through the Ranch Cova Track Club of some significant donations. Uh, not the least of which may be the throwing cage from Sac State. Sac State's getting a new one, they need to replace the old one, the old one could go to Cordova High. And at Cordova High, that cage would allow for adult discus, adult even hammer throw competition to occur there. And of course, it would be a great upgrade for the, for the kids who are training uh, and their safety in high school discus at at Cordova. So, that's gonna be a win-win-win if we can pull it off. Uh, city staff are facilitating as necessary, along with the school district, the Ranch Cova Track Club, um, and the, uh, USATF, that's USA Track and Field. That's like the Olympic Committee for Track and Field in the United States. Their Pacific Division and John Mansour is, uh, is the president of that. So Cyrus has a long association, I think, with John. So we're gonna have some great stuff happening, uh, this summer. It appears that we will have a track meet at Cordova High that is featured live on ESPN, believe it or not, um, if that, if that deal comes through. But at the very least, we're gonna get multiple opportunities for our kids to participate and probably fill up thousands of hotel rooms in the process. So, this is an exciting venture and it will probably also continue for years to come as this site is showing its, uh, its unique strengths to the track world. Let's see, the National League of Cities issued some guidance last week on, and, uh, along with Treasury Department, actually, regulations, first draft regulations on how the COVID relief dollars that were passed over this year might be spent. And, uh, I think it's about a hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy pages of regulations. National League of Cities has come up with some summary documents and I was on a, uh, webinar last week to sort of explain it a little. Um, I think we'll see more guidance to come on how those dollars can can best be used. I can tell you, sitting as an executive committee member at the NLC and as chair of their transportation policy, there's a lot of confusion and discussion and a lot of cities trying to figure out exactly how to best utilize this. So, uh, I think we're on a good course as a city. We will probably wanna pay attention though to those channels and see, see what we see other people doing and try to learn from it. Siri, I wanna thank you for your, uh, engagement with the Junior League of Sacramento. I, of course, have never been a Junior League member, but my late mother-in-law was a past president of the Junior League. Uh, I think she followed now, uh, Congresswoman Matsui as Junior League president. My wife was a member of the Junior League. So that is a great organization, I would fully endorse its, uh, its involvement with, you know, what what you choose to do. I can say they have grants supported us before here in Ranch Cordova. Through the Community Council, the Junior League has given, uh, grants that support, I think it was the helmet program, if I'm not mistaken. The free bicycle helmets for kids and Powell was also involved in that. So, we've had, we've touched Junior League issues here before. And of course, the Junior League way back was one of the entities that so sort of set out to found the Ranch Cordova, uh, or now the Sacramento Children's Museum. So, I think they sort of did a study and got some dollars going and some other people in the community took it from there. But that's a great organization and to the extent we can engage them in Ranch Cordova, more, more power to you. The, uh, E-Waste and the Shred Event was nice at City Hall, it looked like it was, uh, drew drew some folks in. I also contributed some electronic devices that really didn't need to be in my garage anymore. So I'm glad that 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 was offered by the, by the Chamber and the ambassadors. Regional Sand got an interesting issue. Um, all this plastic started showing up in the, uh, in the plant down in Elk Grove. And it's all of a similar size, of a similar type, uh, and I don't know where it's coming from. So the investigation's pretty interesting, I'm a new board member, so this is pretty interesting for me. They're following it upstream, they put out various traps in the, in all the sewer laterals all over the place. And they look and they backtrack to figure out where it is. It's probably one user shredding plastic dumping it in. The problem is they're generating little plastics that could end up in the river, uh, except for the filters that are in place. Um, but it's a problem, so, but it's interesting to me that they can actually trace the problem back in that way. They have a unique ability to to do it. Uh, let's see, what else? We did a groundbreaking for the Connector about a week and a half ago, I was emcee of that, that was a fun event. Garrett was there, uh, our member of Congress was there, Ami Vera. And, uh, Ken Cooley was there representing the Assembly, uh, Brian Dahl representing the State Senate. And, uh, Assemblyman Cooper was also there. So we actually ended up with a lot of Rancher Cordova related representation at the event, which was held on the south side of Folsom. But of course, the next segment coming from that direction is gonna be a Connector segment, uh, we hope, in Ranch Cordova, assuming we can get and arrange for funding for that. We got, uh, a little bit of support from, uh, SaCog this year, but probably not enough to to build anything, uh, substantial. And I can say that the National League of Cities, in looking for unique big projects, has spotted the Connector, surprise, surprise, I I pointed it out to them. And I think we'll be generating some, um, some national sort of documentation of the need in a case like that. So, if there's any, you know, benefit of that, so much, so much the better for us and our needs. Let's see, uh, Big Day of Giving was, I think, a nice success for Ranch Cordova. I'm getting good positive reports, I hear, from Splash and the Children's Museum. Symphony de Oro of the Ranch Cordova charities that were involved in that. So to to residents out there who gave money to our local nonprofits, thank you for doing that. They are a huge part of what makes Ranch Cordova great and a way that we can all work together on on things that matter to us. So, if it's, uh, if it's not Big Day of Giving and you want to support our nonprofits, check out the Cordova Community Council or other organizations in our community that can, to make that possible. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I think that's my report.
Excellent, that's all you did?
That's it.
Are you sure? Okay.
Well, I could probably put a few more things in, but we'll probably-
Alright, Donald Terry.
Um, I'll echo just some of the things I've heard today. So yeah, I I attended the bike ride with Cyrus and Siri. Um, great turnout, uh, there were trails I had not been on with my bike that I haven't actually seen, 'cause I've driven by the openings, but I actually haven't gone down some of those trails. So it was really interesting to, um, you know, spend time with with those folks and see parts of the city that I I haven't been to yet. Um, yeah, and I would echo what David said about Big Day of Giving and also give an update around the Children's Museum. And David, yes, the the Junior League was, I believe, heavily involved in raising the initial funds that got the Children's Museum off the ground. Uh, but the Children's Museum has reopened, um, it is, got limited capacity. It started, um, with member hours only and I believe this past weekend was the first weekend that the general public could show up, you still need an appointment, I believe. Please go check their website if you're interested in going, but they are back up and running. Um, I attended an SDA board meeting last week. I think the thing of note, I know a lot of us are aware that they're, you know, continuing to look at a Measure A plus or whatever that's gonna look like. Um, but another thing that came up at the last meeting was the Sacramento Abandoned Vehicle Service Authority. And the fact that, um, the authorization for, it's a basic, it's a, it's a fee, I believe, a dollar or a car, uh, vehicle license fee that goes directly to this authority to pay for abandoned vehicles and, uh, waste along roads and things like that. Um, so essentially what's gonna happen is in April of next year, it's going to expire. Um, and because of, uh, recent proposition, statewide proposition, um, that reclassified a bunch of fees as taxes, um, the need to, there are likely being need to place, to reauthorize this or renew this fund, to place it on the ballot. The soonest that can be placed on the ballot would be June of next year, which would be after that fund or, um, has expired and that fee has expired. And the earliest it can be reauthorized, assuming the voters approve it, would be sometime in the fall of next year. So there's going to be a lapse of that fund. Um, you know, at a dollar or pop, I don't know, um, it it doesn't sound like a lot, but it actually generates millions of dollars a year. And, um, for our share, 'cause it's based on a per capita, um, allocation, um, but the one interesting thing that I saw was, uh, that our collectivity rate is actually one of the lowest in the county. And that's actually a good thing, what that's saying is that we're issuing more claims for those funds, um, than than we actually have, and it's about thirty-nine percent collectivity. Some other cities, because they're not ticketing or or, um, or citing and removing blighted cars and and abandoned cars as often as we do, um, their collectivity rate actually must love, much higher in the fact that they're not, they're not really working on this as an issue as nearly as much. Um, so that's gonna be coming up, they're they're gonna add, um, essentially they're gonna add to the, the, uh, to the the polling and the study that they're doing for the tax measure, for the the big tax measure that we all know about, um, they're gonna add language about this and and start to do some testing to see if it's something that voters would be open to. Um, I think that's pretty much it, uh, Air District meets next week, so I don't have anything to really report on that. Um, but, yep, that's it for me.
Thank you, Donald. Alright, uh, my report is, uh, went to the groundbreaking of the Connector. Um, you guys probably saw a little bit about In the Sacramento Bee. Um, never just shoot your mouth off to a reporter, 'cause it's gonna show up in a paper. Uh, but, I mean, I honestly believe that this is like the Rolls-Bruil twenty years ago. I think once Connector gets finished, it it greenlights us to become the largest, most productive business district in the region. Not to mention it's gonna make us an amazing, even a more amazing city than we already are. So I can't wait for this to get done and I can't wait to find ways to fund it. Um, I wanna bring this up. Uh, every once in a while, as a mayor, I get to do something I really care about. And doing a dedication to people that I think sometimes go unsung are, is our mural hometown heroes. And thank you Linda for showing up, um, the people that were there were, um, I don't have everyone's exact name, but, uh, Staff Sergeant, I'm gonna butcher everyone's name and I apologize in advance, uh, Ian Ramsey, um, the Captain of the Sacramento Fire, Chris Distel, and his other person, which I don't remember the name Linda, I know you're gonna help me out here with that one, 'cause that was a rough one. Um, and then we had people from like Chamberlain College, like the head of nursing, all came down. And what's interesting are, these are all people who not only help with injections of the COVID, uh, vaccine, they're actually willing to even do it, help out with the COVID vaccines that's going on in our city. So, heroes across the board, of course, we had our police there, we had, um, and then a big thank you to, of course, Robin, who I've known as as Rancho's artist, 'cause every time she does something, it's amazing. And Mike Passoff and Dan Charboys, ooh, that's, that's from BJ and Auto Body. He was so humble, he was like, he was like, I will keep this up, this amazing mural you're putting on our, um, on our wall. And he's like, well, it's not really my wall, it's the wall the bank gave me after I got a loan from them, so it's really the bank's wall. Well, the bank got it from their investors, so it's the investors' wall that gave it to the bank. And so, you know, just to go do this and be able to speak on it a little bit, really just, it it it, you know, makes me feel humble that we have these kind of heroes and all our guys showed up because they realize how critical it is for us in our community to have these people out there. They're the unsung heroes, they go to their their job every day and they're willing to save, protect, even when things are going their way. So thank you for all you do, thank you for everything you do, you keep our city safe and we wouldn't be the same city without us. Uh, Sacramento Fire, I'm hoping we can get that PowerPoint presentation or the the write-up they did and put that somewhere on our website for the community to download, 'cause that was amazing, so we can have that. Because to see how well our Metro Fire is working with us. And in the future, they're looking at even partnering more with the city to help out our business districts on helping to get plans done through faster. So, I see a lot of big things in the future and they're willing to work with us to make sure stuff happens. And then I wanna say a special thank you to our citizens for approving Measure R. Um, I think we're gonna be able to do a lot of good things to be able to recover our, our business community and at the same time paving over roads that have been, I'm pretty sure they're just gravel at this point. Um, and you guys know what I'm talking about, we're excited to be able to take those steps. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and give the, give it over to my city manager and hear his report. Cyrus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, just wanted to start by, uh, acknowledging your, the the bike ride, it was a great ride. And, uh, thank you, uh, for Vice Mayor Terry and and Councilmember Pulipati for attending, uh, a hundred people. And I think by, uh, I probably received at least, uh, seven, eight people approached me and asking that this was extremely successful and and wanting to do this more often. So we, we will plan another one, uh, hopefully not, uh, too distant future. And I would like to, uh, acknowledge our, uh, two of our staff members who, uh, spent a great deal of time working with TMA fifty, uh, Byron Tang and Alyssa Swanson with our Public Works team. Uh, they put a lot of work to get this underway and and make it happen. Another thing I want to acknowledge, uh, many of our city, uh, team members who worked with, uh, California North State University to set up a city, uh, a vaccine clinic here at the City Hall last Wednesday on May twelfth. Uh, and, uh, we, that was a Pfizer, Pfizer vaccine, so we will be planning the second dose. And another vaccine clinic that was, uh, hosted by, uh, the Passa Heights Clinic, um, the second dose vaccine would be, uh, this, uh, ne- next Friday on, uh, I'm sorry, this Friday on, uh, on May twenty-first. So, uh, so hopefully, you know, those who have not gotten the vaccine yet, uh, will find another opportunity to do so. We've also been discussing this with our community partners about the vaccine clinics. Or we think that maybe the next step and the next step of evolution of this is, uh, to go mobile and go to individual neighborhoods and maybe even apartment complexes, places where, uh, people actually do need the the vaccines and may not, uh, be able to, to, to get to the City Hall to get that. So hopefully we can, we can accomplish that with some of our community partners. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to point out, or a couple of other things I wanted to point out is, uh, that every year our city staff participates in, uh, putting out, from, um, they're making contributions, uh, personal contributions to giving, uh, some scholarships to two of our high schools graduates. And this year, uh, the two students that have been, uh, selected to receive this, uh, scholarship are Margot Sofia Batista and, um, Arista Chohan. The, they would be receiving each five hundred dollars from city staff, uh, for their achievement, uh, academic achievement at the, at the high, in in high school. Uh, the other thing I also, also wanted to point it out, uh, point out that the, uh, the City Council approved as part of our Community Enhancement Fund, uh, some time ago to provide some funding to the, uh, New Orchard Senior Center. And, uh, we, uh, will be giving them twelve laptops that they would be using, uh, for some computer classes for for the seniors at the, that starts on, tentatively scheduled to start on, uh, June seventeenth. So that that would be happening. And, uh, uh, for one other thing that you have heard about is, uh, that we have a mobile crisis support team. Uh, our Chief of Police announced that this would be, uh, this is something that we're adding to our police team. And I'm, uh, pleased to announce that it has been launched. And this is a team that will be working, uh, hand in hand with our police officers to provide mental health support for the residents or or the callers that needed, uh, need that and requested. Uh, our, I've asked our police chief to provide some additional details and even, and bring, uh, the team here- I've asked our police chief to provide some additional details and bring the team here to the City Council at a future meeting to introduce them to the community and to the City Council, and that will, that will happen. And lastly, what I wanted, what I was hoping to share with you, you know, we have received some concerns or questions or comments related to some easements on Cassus property. And we passed our city attorney's office and, and our city staff to do some research related to the path and the exact location of the path and some of the, some of the, the information that we could find on, on the maps. I'm going to ask Michael Runner to give you a very brief update. And since this is not on the agenda, we're not trying, we're not going to give you a full presentation. Just give you a very high level update on what some, some of the information we've been gathered and that Michael will share with you. But our goal is to provide this information to the residents and to the people that have contacted us and some of, some organizations that have contacted us about the easement and making sure that we have the, the right information as we, as we look at the, some of the older easements on this property. So with that, Micah?
Sure. Thank you, Cyrus. Michael Runner, Deputy City Manager. Just real briefly, wanted to share the map of where these easements are. As far as, this is not necessarily drawn to exact scale. Remember, this is just to give a representation where the different pieces are. But we thought this would be helpful to provide the community and the council with a little more clarity on, on the different moving or where the easements are. And so, real briefly, this is, the trail easement is in red. That basically goes across the Cassus property. There's a Tiffany East easement that goes from Robodory that connects to the, to the river. But you also see a lot of various other walking trails on the property. And just to be clear, these are not public walking trails. These are trails on private property. The only public trails on the property are the red trail and the yellow trail. Previous action was taken related to opening up this trail. There was a fence located at the end of Sterling Park. There was an action taken by code enforcement to have the fence, ask that the fence be removed. Subsequently, the fence has been removed. And this is the access point to this trail. The end of Sterling Park is the public access point to this larger trail. There's been some previous discussions around the trail as it moves west and the property that, there was a horse corral located on the property that looked like it was blocking the, the easement. The property owner subsequently removed this, this fence. And so that it no longer blocks the easement and goes all the way to the driveway. As we look at the different access points, this is a private driveway off of Folsom Boulevard. This is not a public driveway. This is a private driveway. So basically the fence that's along this driveway, mostly because there is no connection to Mir del Rio. There's nowhere for this access to go. And so therefore the fence along the private driveway can remain in place. We have talked to the county and the county has informed us that they don't intend to open the easement or abandon it at this time. So basically remains as is. So right now, there is no hindrance to walking this public easement along this trail and the access point is off Sterling. We will be producing this map, a final map to, for the public later this week. And also some final statements related to this, to these trails. So wanted to just give that brief update on where the different easements are so that the public is aware of where the public access points are and give that a little more clarity. So with that, that's what I have, Cyrus. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. And, and Council, that's, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Cyrus? I, I, sorry, quick question. So this is an off-repeated question on the Cassus. So is this going to be posted on the website on the light of status?
Yes, it will be. We will provide this information on the city website and to those who have been in communication with us related to the easements.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. We're going to go on to Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar are items that consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for an individual consideration. All items may be approved in one motion. I'm going to pull eighteen point, sixteen point eight because I have a conflict. I have a company and we do business with this company. So I'm going to push that to the end and I will drop off and let Vice Mayor Terry handle that. And you guys can vote on that without me in the room. Besides that, does anyone else have anything they would like to pull?
So hearing none, Garrett?
Madam, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I believe there is also a change on sixteen point nine.
Yeah, and I was just going to, I was just going to mention it, or nine, or thirteen?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thirteen? Sixteen point thirteen. So I was, I was just going to, I, I, what I was going to do was move the ballot on the Consent Calendar with a comment that on sixteen point thirteen, it's one of the subdivision maps that we had. And we identified something that is a policy that we don't want to promote in Rancho Cordoba. It was a street that has two names. Name it from a certain point in the middle, in one direction, it was one name in another direction. It was another name, which is very confusing, not only for the people who live there, but also for public safety or anybody else trying to get to the, trying to get to the, to the addresses on that street. So Public Works is going to work with the property owner, the home builder, and make sure that the street is the same name all the way around.
Okay, so. So was there, was there a motion? Because really, you just made a comment that should have been for an item that we should have pulled from Consent. So.
We don't need to.
Well, if you were going to make a comment, we should have.
No, they're going to deal with it administratively.
Oh, can I get a motion?
I did it. I moved.
Oh.
I'm not sure what that motion was, so I'm not checking it.
The motion is consent calendar other than item sixteen point eight and sixteen point thirteen.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yeah. All right, I'm going to drop off.
Wait, wait, wait. You're only recusing yourself from one of them, right?
Yeah, you want to do sixteen point thirteen real quick?
Was that the only one remaining? No, that was the one that, that Linda made a comment on, I believe.
Yeah.
What was the other one that you pulled?
What are we going to do?
Sixteen point eight.
That's the one I got to drop off.
That's, what's the other one?
Sixteen point thirteen. Of sixteen point thirteen with the comment, with the comment that the street name will be administratively.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor, comment on sixteen point thirteen. There is, there is, there is one street, as Councilmember Budge mentioned, that has two different names. So this is not a substantive change to their plan. This, you know, our, our work was related to final maps is to conform with what we call substantial compliance. So this, this is just a minor cha, edit on making sure that the street has a consistent name. In some, in the early discussions that our Public Works team has had to develop her, they had no, they have no concerns with that. So with that, we will make that final edit to the plans and we will record, record them as such.
This is not a substantial change. It has absolutely nothing to do with the engineering or the characteristics of the map.
Okay. Stacy, from your notes, what's just passed and what was still outstanding to be passed?
So I, I heard what Linda mentioned, but Siri did specifically pull sixteen point eight and sixteen point thirteen when she gave her.
Okay. Okay. So Garrett, before you recuse yourself, somebody needs to motion and pass, I, thirteen, sixteen point thirteen.
I did.
You didn't, your motion was never seconded, Linda.
David did.
Seconded Siri's. You can ask the clerk. She just said sixteen point eight and sixteen point thirteen did not pass.
But, but David Sander did second Linda's motion.
So what's still left to pass? I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out before Garrett recuses.
We need to vote on sixteen point thirteen.
I think we should vote.
Okay, let's vote on sixteen point thirteen.
Yes.
Yes, to what?
I like sixteen point thirteen as written.
Okay. There's a motion for sixteen point thirteen. I'm not even.
There's a motion and a second on sixteen point thirteen. Okay, roll call.
Can somebody just clarify real quickly? The motion was who?
Me, Budge and Sander.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
You're on mute.
David?
Hi.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Run him out.
Okay. Bye, Garrett. Okay. Council, we have item sixteen point eight. Any questions or comments? Or can I get a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Sander or second by Pulipati? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Uh, let's see. Mayor Gatewood is recusing himself. And Vice Mayor Terry?
Hi. Okay, motion carries?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, let me. Okay. Garrett, you have the con. For those, for those of you Trekkies, and Garrett, you're on mute.
I appreciate the Trek joke. That's what I like to hear. All right. Consent public hearing items are roll call votes. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All right. I will go ahead. Open the public hearing. See clerk if there is any comment.
For item sixteen, I'm sorry, for item seventeen point one, we have one hand that's raised in Zoom and it just was lowered. So we do not have any public comment for this item.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any items the, do you guys wish to pull the one item? Okay. Seeing none, can I have a?
Approval of item seventeen.
We have a hand raised now.
All right, close the public hearing.
Got it.
Okay, so. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Excellent. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood?
Hi. Right. Let's go to public hearing items. And Stacy, can you please announce the first item?
The first item is a resolution to approve a major design review for Mather Business Park Project number DD nine eight seven seven.
All right. Can I have, please have June Cowell? Wait for her to get up here. Hi, June. Can you please go ahead and give us a staff report?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Okay. This is June Cowell. I'm senior planner in the planning department. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So the Mather Business Park, a major design review. And if you can go to the next slide, please. The applicant's requesting a major design review for a office light industrial development. It's on eleven point acre site and it includes fifteen buildings totaling one hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred square feet of light industrial warehouse with, has associated office use. They include storage yard areas, parking, lighting and landscaping. And next slide, please. So the site is located in between Retier Road and Systems Parkway, outlined in red. Next slide, please. So to give you some site history, in two thousand eight, this project site was included in the citywide general plan amendments and rezones. So a policy advisory team was composed of public officials and stakeholders. And the total of six joint workshops with the City Council and Planning Commission, with the business community, property owner outreach happened during this time. It was to maintain the consistency between the general plan and the zoning code. So there were amendments that were required. And the project site general plan amendment was from residential mixed use to office mixed use. And the zone change to office industrial mixed use. And it was determined that the amendment to OMU and rezoned to OIMU was more of appropriate use of the land. So the next slide will show what the general plan and zoning was. So this was pre-two thousand eight general plan on your left side. And the site, as you can see, is number twelve, RMU, and then adopted general plan OMU. And next slide. So the pre-two thousand eight zoning was MP, which was Industrial Office Park. And then the adopted was Office Industrial Mixed Use. That's also number twelve on these two maps. Next slide, please. And just to show you what the existing site conditions are. To the south is the high school. And to the north is indoor sports facility, single-family lots and also a portion of the multifamily. And then on the east side is also industrial warehouse. So you can see the different walls and fences, block wall along the high school, a six-foot-high permanent chain link fence. It's a black one to the north between these indoor sports authority, wood fences along the residential lots. And then, of course, the open view metal fence along the warehouse. So some variety of fences and walls. And now we're going to switch over to the applicant, Chuck Shaw. That's going to go over the site plan, the landscape plan, and also the elevations.
My apologies. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, Chuck Shaw, Bike Development Company, good evening. Stacy, could you be kind enough to show the next slide, please? This is the site plan overlay of the eleven point eight acres. It is proposed in three phases. The most critical phase for the community at this time reflects the, the buildings that abut Retier. Those are five thousand square foot buildings with approximately twenty-five hundred square foot yards. And the, the second tier would include the two six thousand foot buildings facing Systems Parkway. The third tier, the larger seventeen thousand foot buildings and a forty-six thousand foot dry industrial building. This park is designed to try to fit with the immediate industrial needs of the community. Stacy, next slide, please. The photo aerial reflects Sacramento Gun Club to the north, the state of Cal- and also multi-family, a multi-family residential that is not quite on your screen. Single-family residential, uh, to the northeast, State of California Warehouse to the west, or pardon me, to the east, I apologize. Uh, down to Systems Parkway, the George Washington Carver High School facility. Uh, access is proposed both on Systems Parkway and on Rootier. Stacy, next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me. Before the next slide, uh, a critical note. Uh, there was concern raised, uh, in the application process about large vehicles. Uh, these are tractor-trailer vehicles. Uh, these vehicles are required by law to file, follow the STAA traffic routes recognized by the state of California and the federal government for this project. That includes Highway fifty to Mather to Old Placerville Road, then to Systems Parkway. That is the only authorized entrance for tractor-trailer vehicles. Uh, next slide, please. There was a conversation about the fencing. The most critical fencing that I would like to point out abuts the multifamily and single-family residential. That is the red border to the north of the site plan. Uh, it was initially proposed to put the CMU wall on that northern border. The sound study also recommended that ninety feet be wrapped, even though that ninety feet does not wraps, uh, single-family residential to add as an additional noise buffer. It was included in the plan accordingly. Next slide, please. Always want the pretty pictures. The elevations that you are seeing, the top elevation reflecting Rootier Road. That is the visual as you drive the street front. Enhanced elevations, enhanced landscaping, enhanced design. Uh, specifically to ensure those areas visible to the street. Uh, June touched based on the wood fencing on the areas of, of the park that are street visible or residential visible. The slide to the bottom, to the, your lower left, that landscape element fronts a detention basin that was designed in the project. We'll have a further discussion on that later. And then the balance of the Systems Parkway building elevations, again, same elements, additional architectural effects, additional paint access details. Uh, this to give a, a nice clean presentation, uh, to Systems Parkway. Next slide, please. This elevation, uh, that you now see, uh, reflecting in, uh, forgive me, I have to go to my screen so I can actually read it. Reflecting buil- buildings one and five that are the frontage streets on Rootier, pardon me, these are the buildings fronting Rootier and Systems Parkway. Again, additional design details, additional colors. Uh, also, at the same time, intended to still be somewhat a, a practical working industrial park. I call your attention briefly to the south elevation. You may note that that does not contain an accent color. Any of the elevations that you will look at this evening that do not contain the accent color are either facing each other in yards or the back of the adjacent industrial property. So once again, anything that is street visible or residential visible is designed to have the additional accent colors. Next slide, please. Same comment again. The buildings that you see with the additional design, colors, trellises, et cetera. These are the, uh, these are the, uh, these particular buildings front the access arterial into the park. And the simpler elevations either face each other towards yards or backing to industrial property. Next slide, please. Same comment, and if there's any, uh, if there's any comments to this, please advise. This elevation primarily accents, uh, the large forty-six thousand square foot building. And you can see the details to its frontage and then accents the, the, uh, buildings that front Systems Parkway. Again, uh, streets is, or elevations visible to the street, additional detail. Next slide, please. Landscaping plans, I, I don't have a pointer to, uh, help assist. So I'm going to focus to a couple of key elements. Again, pointing to the northern portion of the site plan. This is enhanced conifer and evergreen planting adjacent to the residential. Then the series of, uh, the, the normal required, uh, tree shade requirements are all met. The triangular piece to the bottom, uh, well, you, you'll see it in the elevation to the right and then completed to the elevation to the left. That is a detention basin designed to address ten-year and hundred-year flood flows. And our civil engineer, Rick Hanson, is here if anybody has any specific questions about it. Next slide, please. There was, uh, as in standard major design review applications, there was a series of studies that were, that were generated. Uh, the traffic operational assessment, the traffic study that was completed in this process in the city of Rancho Cordova. Any project generating more than a thousand vehicle, vehicle trips a day is required to undertake a traffic study. While this project only generated, generated approximately seventy, pardon me, seven hundred and forty uh, tri- trip generations in a day, the AM peak was estimated to be a hundred and four. The city prefers any peak traffic generation over a hundred be addressed in a traffic study. So the traffic study was generated and no particular surprise in the outcome. Tractor, this, this use, the industrial use is the least intrusive of the possible approved uses within the zoning. The environmental noise assessment, we touched briefly on that, completed by Bullard and Associates. There was nothing to surprise there. Uh, there was the addition of the extra ninety-foot, uh, CMU wall to create a better, uh, sound deadening, uh, capability. Nothing exceeded over fifty-five decibels, uh, if I recall the report correctly. And as a condition of approval, the park operates from an hour of seven AM to ten PM, which was a recommendation of the study. The biological resource review, uh, reflected nothing out of the ordinary. The cultural resource assessment, again, nothing out of the ordinary. Standard conditions to both. This particular property had been, uh, been farmed and been owned by Tykert, uh, for years. The neighborhood meeting with It Takes a Village, uh, with It Takes a Lincoln Village, my apologies. We spent approximately, I believe, an hour and ten minutes. We wanted to make sure that we addressed as many of the concerns as possible from the residents. We focused to the project design, the potential uses, the truck, traffic routes that we've discussed. The crossing on Rootier Road, noting, as I'm sure many of you are aware, there is a controlled signal directly north of the northern boundary of the property which, uh, accesses the park, the regional park across the street. Other than that, traffic movements are fairly normal. And the environmental assessment, again, uh, no particular surprises to that. Those reports are all in your packets. Next, please.
And with that check, I'll pick over.
I was gonna say, as, as much i- in my farewell, as much as I would like to make these recommendations, I must refer to the senior planner. Thank you, June.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the city council find a project, um, exempt pursuant CEQA guideline one five one eight three and adopt the resolution approving the major design review for Mather Business Park DD nine eight seven seven. That's what the project plans, attachment two, and the conditions of approval, attachment three. And with that, if anybody has any questions?
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open for public hearing. Ask the city clerk, are there any speaker cards?
Uh, the city clerk's office has received one written public comment via email, which was distributed to the council and is available on our city's website. That came from FISA. And we have two, uh, in the, uh, Zoom and by phone who are raising their hands to speak on this item. The first person is telephone number one nine one six two zero five. You'll have three minutes.
Helen Will, I'm in Basque. I live in Sierra Grande Circle. Um, I have two things. First off is, um, what consideration is being given to the fact that you have a gun range in the area? And the kind of businesses that you're gonna bring into there, does it conflict with the black powder that is used at the gun range? The other thing is, I'd like to, uh, talk about the fact that prior comments were made about the easement, uh, over the Cassis property. You covered nineteen seventy-three easement. You did not cover the nineteen eighty-seven easement. That clearly defines that the Cassis would pay for a bridge over the canal and that that driveway was for everyone who was physically connected to that driveway. Therefore, section four, which is the property in dispute where our easements run, they are part of the property that has access to that, um, driveway.
All right, so, uh, let's go, Stacy. Ma- ma'am, you're not, we're, we're addressing, uh, something different. Um, did you wanna bring up something about this, the business park?
The first portion was dealing with the fact that you have a gun range in the area of this, uh, light industrial. Has anybody taken in consideration that they have black powder there? Black powder requires that you not have certain type of businesses in the area. And also is, since it was barren land, has anybody contacted the Native Americans to get approval that there are no archaeological digs in the area?
Thank you for your testimony. And mayor, if, if you don't mind, perhaps we might take all public comments and then allow staff to respond to them individually and with the assistance of Mr. Shaw at the conclusion of the public comments. Yes, that's what I was planning to do. Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Stacy, your next one, please.
The next speaker is FISA. FISA, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. This is FISA in Lincoln Village. I would like to, uh, respectfully request that any approval on the design, um, be delayed till a further meeting because in February of this year, I put in a public records request for any and all studies having to do with this project. And at that time, there was no mention or receipt of the cultural resources assessment. And that is something that the community should have time to review. Um, I did request the documents and then show them with stakeholders. I was the liaison for the community session. Um, I feel that was pertinent information that we did not receive. So, uh, regarding the non-compliance with the records request, I respectfully would like you to delay any decision to allow time for more public input and review of the cultural resource assessment. Thank you.
Stacy? Anyone else?
That is all the public comment that we have for this item.
Okay. Adam, would you like to respond?
Like, staff, would you like to make any comment on the cultural resources issue? Or the gun, or the gun issue?
I can address the cultural resources issue. Darcy, the art planning manager. Um, so generally, um, as a matter of practice, cultural resource studies have cultural sensitivity and are not released to the public. Um, depending upon what information is in there, they can be provided to, um, historical, um, entities or the tribes. So in this case, um, at the time that it was requested, it was not released it, released to the public. Um, once we got ready to go to a hearing and thoroughly reviewed everything, the document doesn't have any sensitivity in it. There's no sensitive nature to the site. Um, so it was determined that the cultural resource study could be part of the final approval package.
Thank you. And what about the black powder? Mr. Mayor?
Actually, can I ask a follow-up question to Darcy about what, what you just shared? So the general practice is not to release them to the public at all if they had sensitive findings in them. They would be released to the entities or the organizations that would be related to that sensitive finding. In this case, there was none found and since a member of the public had requested it, it was included in the board packet, in the council packet and agenda for tonight.
Right, so upon review, when we're looking at the final approval documents as part of the record, um, we included it as an attachment because there isn't any sensitive nature in there. The results and the findings found that there was nothing in there that needed to be either redacted or withheld, so we released the entire document.
Okay, so, doc, wait, I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanna, I, I wanna summarize what I'm hearing. There is no sensitive items found on this site. No culturally sensitive items found on this site. And at the time of the public records request, it is the practice and by law, we, we do not release those sensitive findings to anyone except for who they are related to.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and just to, to explain the, the public policy behind this for the benefit of the public. If we were in those initial, um, studies to find that a site was very sensitive, that had particular artifacts or was of high significance to, uh, Native American tribes. Um, the disclosure of the exact details about that site, about its location, about the artifacts could actually cause them to be desecrated, destroyed, or removed, um, by the public or by collectors or by others. And so it's important under law that there be protections for those sensitive cultural resources um, and that they not be fully disclosed, um, to the, to the public.
And Adam, that, that's the reason why there isn't some master index somewhere available to the public of all those sites in our region or the state?
It's, there, there is, there are publicly non-accessible, um, information sources that the tribes themselves and other qualified confidential, um, archaeologists, um, have access to. But that is why, um, it is to protect these artifacts themselves. Um, um, and that there are, as Darcy described in, in a low level of detail, very detailed rules about how precisely you release information about these sites in order to strike a balance between public information and, and the preservation of the resources themselves.
Yeah, I, uh, I have been asked on a couple of occasions recently, now, why doesn't the city have a map that shows all of those resources within city boundaries? And I think that this is, this is the answer. Such a map exists, but we will not publicly release it because we're trying to protect those sites.
Makes sense.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, so I do have some information about the social and physical history of this site. Um, we have a wonderful local resident, uh, members of the Sato family, uh, Kyo and her family. Her parents came to this country as Isai and they leased this property in this particular vicinity from a gentleman because they were Japanese and not allowed to own property. So their lease holdings was approximately Rootier to Ellenwood to the train, uh, the train tracks, which had been in existence since Mather opened in nineteen eighteen to Old Clusterville Road, which is also quite historic. Um, the Satos raised, uh, six or seven children on this piece of property. And I believe that the farmhouse that is adjacent to, uh, Mayhew Baptist Church was a part of their original family property. But sometime before the war, Tykert bought the corner and they mined the whole thing, which is why there's a hole in the ground. So the entire area has been disturbed both by farming activity as well as mining activity.
And you never made me to be the wealth of information.
And you never made me to be the wealth of information. I don't understand how you remember all this, but literally, I just want to document you every time we do anything. Because one, I will never remember half of that. Two, that's amazing, why haven't we shot a video of Linda? Like just going around having her point out to us and saying, "Did you know I knew the family? I went to school with one of them." This happens to be what's going on.
About it, Garrett, it's in her book. There's a copy in the city library. Um, originally, uh, Kio's book was called Dandelion Through the Crack. It's an absolutely fascinating, um, uh, relating of her family's history in this area. And, um, um, and then it was renamed, uh, as Kio's Story by the publisher. Dandelion Through the Crack was a great name, and the copy that we have in the city library is autographed and it's available to you to read. You will love it.
Interesting. All right, what about the black powder?
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I respond to that?
You may.
Thank you, sir. The Sacramento Gun Club, uh, many of you are familiar with the facility. Regarding the comment of black powder, first, the, the use of firearms in that facility is controlled very carefully by HEPA air filtration. The gun club literally monthly goes through a filter analysis. Those filters consist of what is referred to, and forgive, forgive me for the detail, but there's a purpose to it. They're pre-filtered through a series of MERV 13 filters and then final filtered through a series of HEPA filters. That airflow is monitored monthly to ensure that no lead or other residues leave the powder. For those of you familiar with the facility itself, it is a building within the building. So the gun ranges, even though the building is tilt concrete, the gun range itself and where firearms are stored have CMU brick sounding, surrounding those areas. And no matter what your position regarding firearms may be, it is an incredibly safe and the premier facility of its type in Northern California. So respectfully, the use is allowed, uh, adjacent to, the industrial use is allowed to, adjacent to the Sacramento Gun Club as the Sacramento Gun Club was entitled to, uh, be built adjacent to multifamily residential. So it poses no risk to the project or vice versa. Thank you.
All right, is there any other council, uh, comments?
I, I just, I just have a question for, uh, the city attorney. Um, I just want to make sure that it's kind of abundantly clear what we're being asked to do tonight and what we're not being asked to do tonight. This is design review. The use of this project, the building, all of that is by right because they already have the zone, correct? So we're just, our approval tonight is for what the buildings look like, not what the buildings are or what the use of the land was going to be. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So given that, I will move that we find that the environmental documentation is adequate and appropriate and that we adopt the resolution for Mather Business Park major design review.
I'll second that.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the public, um, um, public hearing?
Hearing.
And then, go ahead Linda.
I said.
And who was her second?
I was.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
So if I don't say anything, can I just make Chuck stay with us forever?
I, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, Mayor. I do think it might be appropriate to, uh, take a moment to acknowledge that this is Mr. Shaw's, I believe, intended last appearance, although, um, he may be lured back into service on other projects if, if we know him well enough.
I'm gonna say aye, but I'm not gonna be happy about it. Chuck, it's been great working with you. Wish you nothing but the best when you retire to go start your new company, Shaw Development.
Mayor, if you can indulge me for just one brief second. June, Darcy, Adam, Mike, I see you hiding down there somewhere. Cyrus, we've done this for a long time, thank you. Uh, the gentleman who appeared on your screen, uh, with the beard, Mr. Hanson, was part of the original entitlements in the Mather Business Park back in 1982. It has been an honor to be part of this community from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck. It's been an honor to work with you, to work with you.
Hi, hi Chuck, I, I would just say, I, I, I hope that, um, the next generation of developers are, are, are watching carefully, um, and learning from your style and success. And it has been a, a great pleasure to work with you and appreciate your commitment, not just to the projects, but to the community. And wish you all, all the best of success in, in your future endeavors and hope that a good portion of those will be directed towards public and community service in one way or another.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you, Chuck. I'm gonna be last to say, but not the least, uh, thank you absolutely for everything you've done. I want you to really enjoy your retirement, and then when you feel like, okay, I'm not ready to be retired because I got so much more to give, which you do, um, you know, I'm welcome to see you back.
Thank you, Cyrus.
Whatever new role you have.
Like consulting for the city of Rancho Cordova.
Amazing.
Hey Rick, I know you see, thank you buddy for all, for everything you've, we, we put Rick through the wringer on this one, courtesy of the state of California. Thanks for everything you did, Rick.
You bet. Just sticking around Chuck.
It's funny, I was part of Corpec in 1982, and I suspect, um, uh, I remember Rick bringing the original plans for the business park before Corpec.
It was a long time ago.
Yeah, Rick and I started our careers after the seventh grade.
I remember too, when you brought that in 1982 when I was five. It's, uh, good reading, good reading. Thank you guys, thank you Chuck for everything you did for me.
Everybody, bless you, thank you.
All right.
Thanks Chuck.
Let's go on to calendar items. Stacy, I'll let you get it shifted around. Shift, shift, shift.
19.1, regular calendar item, a resolution awarding construction contract number 2021-79 in an amount not to exceed $5,521,993.40 with B&amp;M Builders, Inc. for the Cordova Vineyards Neighborhood Street Rehabilitation Project Phase One.
Before we start this, I just want to say, thank goodness, and for all my Cordova Vineyard people, we are so excited to have this road being rebuilt. Yes, we got all your emails, we've read them all, we are totally excited about doing this and getting this done. Now, move for approval, can I get a second?
I'm pretty sure there are people from the public that wanted to comment.
Oh, we're gonna talk to them, it's gonna be amazing.
Then you can move to approve it.
Oh, yeah, you're right, let's slow down. Albert, show everyone the amazing new road that Cordova Vineyard is about to get.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and councilmembers, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And Stacy, I believe we have an exhibit, if we could pull that up for, for council and the public to see the roads that are going to be rehabilitated. And while Stacy is pulling that up, this, as I've mentioned recently to city council, this is a very important safety and maintenance project and eagerly anticipated by the community. And Ben is, Ben Chan, I believe, is here to tell us a little bit more about the project. And I'm not hearing Ben, so, um, I, I had presented this to, to council recently, and the, we're starting with this first phase, the green highlighted roads are going to be the first phase of the, uh, local collectors, including of course, Aramond Drive. And then shortly into, um, towards the end of this year, we'll be moving forward with a second phase, uh, which will be breaking ground on the remainder of the roadways in, in the Cordova Vineyards community. And I did, I'm open to any questions from city council or the public.
Councilmember Sander, I guess.
Albert, um, the, the cost here is, are we adding these two numbers up? We're getting 15 million in this project?
That is the total for the two phases.
And that seems like a lot for a neighborhood, but then I'm looking at the map and this is just a big hunk of neighborhood compared to sort of the sizes we've done in, in some other areas, I'm guessing.
This is one of the largest neighborhoods that we've invested in so far, and with the investment com- combined of both Measure R and Measure H, it'll allow us to do larger projects with a greater frequency. So definitely look forward to this project coming up very soon, um, and then the next phase, and we're already planning for mid-2022 to work on the Mills Ranch community that's on the north side of Coloma Road, um, almost due north from this, this neighborhood.
So just to frame this a little bit, you know, we set out more than 10 years ago, you might know better than I, to repay basically every, and touch up and repair every neighborhood street in Rancho Cordova. And I don't know, when this piece is done, how many neighborhoods do we have left and what do you think the timeline is for those?
Yeah, we're, we're meeting with the team right now to talk about the, the next neighborhood after, after the Mills Ranch. And we have a little bit of, uh, further analysis before we can make a final determination. Um, the, the challenge that we have is that we do have a significant amount, over $60 million of just pavement restoration, um, not counting the sidewalks and all of the improvements beyond that. So, um, to, to fully catch up with all of that deferred maintenance is still a ways out.
So certainly we'd have Measure R resources going forward. There's a lot of chatter now about a federal infrastructure bill, but there's not much infrastructure in the infrastructure bill, unfortunately, not this kind. Um, this makes up less than, I think, 7% of the total infrastructure bill to be spent on, uh, on streets. And as that's structured, I think basically that would be an allotment about equal to what we get every year from the federal government and federal gas tax anyway. So it'd sort of be like a doubling of our, of our federal share perhaps. But to Measure R, uh, do you think there are more grant dollars that are gonna be available to us to deal with those neighborhoods we haven't touched yet? Because 60 million is still a pretty big bite.
We've been really successful in pursuing grant dollars, and as, as you're familiar, we received over, well over $10 million in this latest grant round through SECOG. One of the challenges that we have is that most of those grant dollars are focused towards large, large, complete streets projects. And there's been a limited availability of grant dollars to go towards straight maintenance in neighborhood roadways.
Yep, that is the situation. Fixed it first is the, uh, is the phrase we like to use at SECOG to talk about, uh, reinvesting in the infrastructure we already have on the ground. Thank you, Albert.
Right. So, um, I'm gonna go into it, let's say, is there any public comment? Stacy?
Yes, the city clerk's office has received public comment from a few members of the public. The first is Ann Richardson, second is Donald Childs, third is Angel Ball, and fourth is FISA Mugal. Those public comments have been received by the clerk's office and will be made available on the city's website. And FISA is in our Zoom meeting and, uh, has her hand raised. So, FISA, you'll have three minutes.
Excellent. Go ahead, FISA.
Hi, this is FISA in Lincoln Village. I'd like to say I support both phases of this project. Um, I guess Mills Ranch is next. And with that, I would, uh, strongly recommend or beseech you to please consider, after Mills Ranch, doing rehab in the countryside neighborhood where, um, I'm sure you all remember Albert's presentation, um, showing where sort of the, the worst conditions are in the city. Um, they do have some pretty bad roads there, and, uh, my kids by commute to school in that neighborhood, and, uh, we bike to the Mather Heritage Trail through that neighborhood. Um, so we know firsthand the condition of the roads and how poor they are. I would really like to see some rehab over there. Thank you.
That's all the public comment that we have. I'm sorry, we have one more. Matt just raised his hand. Matt, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, members of council, Matt coming from, uh, Capital Village. Um, I serve on the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Committee, and, uh, we have seen quite a few projects over the years in this area. While I'm in, in, in support of the project, I do want to say that I hope that whatever you end up doing there, uh, reduces the speed on the roads. I know we've, we've gotten, like I said, a lot of comments over the years about that area. It is a neighborhood just, you know, dying to get normal traffic flows on it. And, um, while I haven't seen a, a rendering of what a typical street would look like, hopefully you're able to fix some of the issues, uh, that we've identified over the years, but, you know, for whatever reason or not, we're not able to approve traffic calming measures, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Gatewood, that's all the public comment that we have.
Okay, so I am happily going to ask for a public, for a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a, a question, uh, actually for Albert, it doesn't impact the vote at all, but I think it might serve the public well. Albert, um, we don't pick the neighborhoods that have been reinvested in and gotten their streets redone at random. This is basically a scientific engineering evaluation process. Could you just describe that a little bit, basically how we're, how we're engineering this for the biggest bang for the buck?
Thank you, Councilmember Sander. And we, there is definitely a citywide evaluation that we do of all of the roads. And we try to balance hitting all, going through all of the roads in the city with making sure that we're making a smart investment in our, in our roadways. And it is, it is, it can be challenging. Um, the best road, the biggest bang for the buck is to address those roadways that haven't, um, failed significantly yet, is the, is the biggest bang for the buck. But I'm really pleased that we are getting to some of those roadways that have failed in the Cordova Vineyards community, including Aramond, which has been long awaited.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, only because I remember the public brought it up?
Sure.
Uh, Cyrus, um, earlier this year, we asked staff to start working on traffic calming, um, along, uh, Coloma. Do you have an anticipation of when we might be talking about that again? Because we, we gave direction to the, to the city manager and staff months ago, um, that we wanted to look at more ambitious projects to traffic calming along that corridor.
Uh, yes, uh, what I can say that, uh, our public works team is working on evaluating a number of options and alternatives. Of course, you know, every option comes with its own, uh, challenges and drawbacks, so we want them to take a very close look at various options and the implications of them. And, uh, we should be in a position to at least give you a preliminary report back on, on the work we've done, probably, probably sometimes in the fall, is that fair to say?
That's correct, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Stacy, can we go ahead and have the, uh, next, um, item announced?
Yes, the next item is 19.2, and that is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award construction contract number 202, 2021-75 in an amount not to exceed $11 in an amount not to exceed eleven million, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents with Tykert Construction for the White Rock Road, Fitzgerald Road to a half a mile east of Rancho Cordova Parkway Project to widen, realign the road, increase safety and promote economic recovery.
Albert and Edgar, staff report please, gentlemen.
Thank you, and good, good evening, Mayor Gatewood. This is, and Stacy, we also have a slide for this project if you could bring it up, please. And while you're bringing that up, I just wanted to reiterate, this is another eagerly anticipated project that addresses critical safety concerns to improve the safety of the road. It provides parallel capacity to fifty and it's a very important catalyst to economic development. And Edgar Medina is our CIP manager. He's been working diligently on this project for over two, over two years. And I'll hand it over to Edgar to give us more information. One other item that I wanted to mention also is that there will be a closure of White Rock Road for about six months. And over to you, Edgar.
Thank you, Albert. Um, hopefully you guys could hear me. Uh, Edgar Medina, uh, CIP manager for Public Works Department. Uh, thank you for, Mayor, council members, for allowing me to, to present this, uh, eagerly awaited, uh, uh, project like, uh, Albert mentioned. So a couple of things on this project is, it's in total, it's a one point three miles of improvements for that first, uh, portion of the, of the project. We are going to widen to the, the full, uh, extent of the, of the roadway cross section. So from curb, uh, curb and gutter to curb and gutter on the north and south side. So from Fitzgerald, uh, to just the, the, the business park, it'll be to its full, uh, cross section. So those areas, uh, where we currently don't have any curb and gutter, it'll be a full section. And then just east of the, the industrial park to just about where the Stericycle property, we will widen the road to four lanes with, uh, curb and gutter on the south side, a median, uh, landscape median, in the center, of course, uh, drainage improvements, four traffic signals, um, a water line that we've coordinated with Sacramento County Water Agency. Um, so it's, in total, we have about, uh, eleven million dollars worth of improvements per the Tykerts' bid. But there's been a lot of time, uh, invested on this project, uh, in the last year to relocate some of the utilities. Uh, some of the things that have occurred just prior to this is the smud pulls have been relocated. We're wrapping up the, the final, uh, overhead wire to get off the existing pulls. Been working with Aerojet, with Elliott Homes to kind of sequence up our, our, our project. So we're, we're excited to begin. We're currently scheduled to begin in July with, uh, just having an initial kickoff meeting with, with Tykert. Um, again, this project is partly, uh, grant funded. It has eight point five million dollars of, of grant funds on it. And then about two point seven million dollars of waterline funds. And then the rest coming in from our mitigation. So this represents that Phase Two that's shown in the exhibit. Um, and then later on this year, we're, uh, hopefully in about a month or two, we'll advertise the second, the first phase, which is from Sunrise to Fitzgerald. And then hopefully in the near future, as part of, uh, the grant we receive for that third phase, which we received five point five million, we're hoping to secure additional funding and, and continue to move, uh, easterly to our city limits.
Excellent, thank you. All right, Cyrus.
Um, it, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a point. It's, uh, both related to this project and the pri- previous one. Wanted to, uh, acknowledge the Public Works team, you know, bringing about close to, uh, uh, twenty million dollars of contracts, uh, to fruition uh, with very complex issues to resolve along the way. It's a very difficult task and, uh, and they have been working diligently on this for years to get it to this point. I wanted to acknowledge and appreciate, uh, Albert, Edgar, Ben and other, other engineers trying in public works who've been working on this, other staff. But also remind the public that with every improvement and every construction project comes a level of inconvenience as well. You know, with, in this case, the road will, uh, be closed, uh, for some period, a period of time, close to six months. And, uh, that's necessary given the extent and the scope of the project. It's, uh, uh, to keep, uh, the construction site safe and keep the public safe, uh, this has to be done. Uh, but it will generate some inconveniences to, uh, to, uh, mainly just, um, a, a small number of businesses, but overall, uh, i- it is true with any construction project. And the same thing is true with the residential work. There would be noise, there would be dust, there would be other inconveniences. And we ask for the public, uh, that the public bear with us. Uh, that's unfortunately the cost of improving and, and making a positive change, uh, with construction projects.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions? Oh, actually, let's ask, uh, Stacy, do you have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have, uh, we've received nothing via email. Uh, but Matt is raising his hand. And Matt, you have been unmuted and you'll have three minutes.
Uh, thanks again. I, I just want to say that, uh, I completely agree with counsel. This has been such a long time coming, uh, it's a necessary expansion of the roadway. Two things I wanted to ask you to keep in mind, um, maybe if I'm not seeing it correctly, someone can mention it, but I don't see lighting on that street plan. And I wasn't sure if, uh, we were talking about lighting along the street, um, at, in this phase, or are we going to wait for residences to pop up before we talk, we talk about that? But the other thing that I think is really important in this scenario is what's happening along the west side of White Rock to Zinfandel. And that is the obscene amount of gravel trucks. And I know that we have talked about that for many years. Uh, ruts in the road, gravel all over the place. And living in, in Capital Village, I mean, we, we drive that road every day. Um, I'm asking that counsel, please consider, what are you going to do, not just for the west side, but actually begin to expand out east, keeping the truckers from creating those ruts and dumping gravel on the street, which is kind of an almost daily routine over there. Uh, the ruts are, are enough of an issue, but the gravel also represents, you know, potential property interests. So that's all I have, but thank you for your time.
Albert?
Thank you for those questions. And with, with regard to lighting, and as I mentioned, this is an important catalyst to economic development as well as a critical safety improvement. And as a part, following this project and in parallel with this project, developers in Rio de Oro will be constructing the frontage improvements, which will include landscaping on the south side as well as sidewalk and, and lighting to serve the early residential and commercial developments as they come in.
Excellent. All right, counsel, do you have any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask them.
I, I would only say that I echo the, the commenter's comments about the gravel trucks and trucks in general, but some of that is not within our control and it's facilities in the county that they're just choosing to use our, our streets. Uh, but with that, I'll move the, the item.
I'll second it, um, and also second the comment. I think my family, we probably go through about a windshield a year just, uh, driving on Highway fifty. Um, I don't think that's normal for the, the short amount of driving we do on a highway like that. But given the amount of gravel, uh, that's being mined out of, uh, just to the east of, of Rancho Cordova and being held to the rest of the region for use and construction, I guess that's, that is the nature of it. We, we do have some things we've worked on over the years, but, um, yeah, that's a constant issue.
Stacy, roll call.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Aye. All right, Stacy, I'm going to let you clear everybody. All right. Good. Okay, Stacy, can you please announce our next subject?
The next subject is staff presentation of the city's stormwater program.
Uh, Dalia Fadell? I get it. So close, right there?
It's close, it's Dalia.
Okay, I'll take close, I'll take close. Cyrus, stop laughing. All right.
Mayor Gatewood, just before we hand it over to Dalia, I wanted to say the city of Rancho Cordova's stormwater infrastructure, we have over two hundred and fifty miles of infrastructure for stormwater within the city. And the planning, the maintenance and operations, and especially the regulatory environment through the state and federal laws is very, very complicated. We're very fortunate and I'm, I'm happy to have Dalia Fadell on our, on our team. She's recognized as an expert both regionally and statewide. And I'm going to hand it over to Dalia and she's going to tell us about our stormwater program and some recent advancements.
Thanks, Albert. So good evening, honorable mayor, council members and, um, city manager. Uh, I'm happy to provide you with an update on our stormwater program today and get some feedback, um, from you, uh, on next steps. So I'm Dalia Fadell, I'm a senior engineer with the, uh, Public Works Department and I manage the city's stormwater program. Next slide. So today's presentation, uh, is to provide you with an overview of recent advances in the stormwater program as well as recommended next steps. We're going to go over a quick overgra- uh, quick overview of stormwater background, um, stormwater quality requirements, maintenance and operations of our system, um, the stormwater master plan that we just completed, high priority projects, and finally, uh, go over the sources of funding for our program. Next slide. So a quick overview of stormwater, uh, what are the for- the sources of stormwater runoff? Stormwater runoff basically is runoff that comes off, uh, residential lots, driveways, um, commercial and industrial uses as well as streets. It's runoff that goes through the city's drainage system, basically, um, a series of underground pipes and manholes and drainage inlets, um, that eventually make it into creeks and channels and, uh, finally, uh, outfall out to the American River. So it's important to note here that, um, that runoff goes directly to our local creeks and river and it does not get treated through a treatment plant first. Um, uh, unlike sewer, um, runoff that goes through the treatment plant first. Next slide. So an important component of our program is the stormwater quality component. As Albert mentioned, uh, we have to comply with very stringent city, uh, we have, uh, city municipal stormwater permit requirements, and those are requirements that come from the state to comply with the Clean Water Act. The permit has multiple components. Um, the, I would say the most major is the new development requirements that developers have to comply with. So part of the city's role is really to untangle the state's requirement and help developers navigate through, uh, through these requirements to get to compliance on their project. Uh, part of the program requirements also includes submitting annual work plans and progress reports to the state. We also, uh, closely track new statewide and regional policies to determine impacts on the city and our operations. And finally, we participate, uh, in a number of regional efforts. Um, on a countywide effort, we participate with the Sacramento Stormwater Quality Partnership. On a statewide level, we participate with the California Stormwater Quality Partnership and actually serve, uh, on the board of directors. Uh, next, uh, slide please. Another important component of the city's stormwater program is the maintenance of and operations of our system. So since twenty fourteen, the city took over the maintenance and operation of the system from county of Sacramento. And our, uh, system is quite complex. It includes a total of six pump stations, uh, six detention basins and a lot more to come as the area develops. We have over two hundred and fifty miles of drainage pipes, um, seventy-seven hundred drainage inlets, uh, more than four thousand manholes, uh, forty-one miles of creeks and channels and two levees. Uh, what we do with the maintenance and operations is basically coordinate the routine maintenance of all these facilities as well as storm response activities before, during and after storm events. We also prioritize and respond to customer services, uh, service requests and resident complaints. Uh, that includes doing some major coordination with regulatory agencies, especially the Department of Fish and Wildlife to obtain all the required permitting to do these, uh, maintenance activities. Uh, we think this actually helps us meet the city goals by safely conveying runoff and protecting, uh, property from flood flows. It also protects the environment because we're constantly out there cleaning, um, trash and debris from our, uh, local waterways and preventing that from getting to the river. And finally, promoting economic development because we are protecting our local businesses and industrial facilities from, uh, flooding impacts. Next slide. So I want to give you an overview of the stormwater master plan project that we just completed. This was a three-year project that was, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, it, it just wrapped up on March thirty-first. Uh, the project had multiple goals. Mainly, it was to assess the condition of the existing stormwater facilities. As you know, we inherited a lot of those facilities from the county. Uh, and some of them have been in place for, since the fifties, so they're, uh, in very poor condition. Uh, we wanted to identify the system deficiencies in any unmet community needs, uh, identify opportunities to enhance stormwater quality. And, and finally, we were able to develop a capital improve- improvement plan uh, with a prioritized list of flood control projects as well as repair projects. In total, we identified a need of about sixty million dollars in deferred maintenance and repair needs that we would have to work on over the next twenty to thirty years. Next slide. So one of the projects that was highlighted in the master plan is addressing the flooding at Sunrise and Monier Circle. So this is actually a historic photo for Sunrise Boulevard in that area, uh, from nineteen ninety-seven during the heavy rain event. Um, you can see from the, uh, photo that the flooding gets quite deep. And we identified an opportunity to basically, uh, build a regional detention basin that will address the flooding issue and with cost of about five million dollars. Next slide. To elaborate a little more on the sunrise flooding issue, this, um, is an exhibit from two D modeling that just shows, one, the geographic extent of the actual flooding, but it also shows you the depth of the flooding, uh, and how deep it gets at that sunrise and Monier Circle intersection. You can see that the darker color basically means, uh, deeper flooding. Uh, so in some areas, it gets as deep as four feet. Um, so obviously this is an area that we're concerned about and we would love to address by adding a detention basin to that area. Next slide. Uh, another, uh, category of projects that was identified through the master plan is to, um, enhance existing drainage facilities. So this is a photo of the Bear Hollow Detention Basin, obviously with no water in it. Uh, and one of the things we want to do is actually enhance these existing bases, creeks and channels by, uh, doing some fence enhancements, concrete lining replacement. We have a bunch of old, uh, channels where the concrete has fallen off, uh, landscaping improvements, educational signs and things like that, that we feel would really help these, uh, facilities kind of integrate better into the community. Um, and will help the residents enjoy them more. Um, so that's one of our goals. Next slide. Uh, finally, through the master plan, we were also able to identify a number of repair projects and those include, um, you know, manhole repairs, uh, pipe repairs, pipes of small projects that total about two and a half million dollars. The strategy for those would be to piggyback off of other city projects. For example, like the pavement rehab projects and things like that, where we're able to conduct these repairs while, um, having some cost savings, um, through the project and some efficiency. Next slide. So sources of funding for the program, we have multiple sources of funding, uh, for our stormwater program. Uh, on the operation and maintenance side, mainly the funds come from the Stormwater Utility One, which is the utility money that residents pay, uh, by monthly through, uh, their utility bills. And that's mainly in the older part of the city. There is also Stormwater Utility Two or SWU Two, which is also paid by residents but more on the newer part of the city. And then finally, the Stormwater Impact Fee Program that we just brought over from Sacramento County. So it used to be called Zone Eleven. That's actually a multi-million dollar program that will help us advance development. We're very excited about bringing it over because it will give us more local control over administering our funds. It will also help add developers because it will provide streamlined plan review and increased efficiency. And they will only have one point of contact to work with them on these credits and fees instead of having to deal with multiple departments when the program was at Sacramento County. So that will be another valuable source of funding for us to move forward with some of these future projects. Uh, next slide. So just quickly, as next step, we are going to be exploring future funding opportunities, mainly going after some grants and identifying opportunities to partner up with city projects or other regional projects where we're able to achieve some of our goals. We also want to begin designing some of our high priority projects. And finally, we're open to any suggestions or feedback from council members about our activities or any future projects. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you Dahlia.
Stacy, do we have any public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any written public comment for this item and I do not see any hands raised via Zoom or telephone. No.
Okay, council, looks like Linda has something to say. Go ahead Linda.
So, I have a question. Dahlia, the county always, the county has a schedule for raising the Zone Eleven fee every year to keep up with inflation or whatever. Do we have a formal plan like that?
Yes, we do. So annually, we're gonna be increasing the fees and posting that online and it does go up basically based on inflation. At the same time, the credits that the developers receive will also go up every year based on inflation and those schedules will be posted online.
Okay. So, so my comment is something that I shared with Albert several months ago. California has a water problem. We never have enough of it. So, basically, the way our formal drainage works, every drop of water that is generated from the sky or wherever goes into a pipe, is carried to the river, carried out to the ocean. So, wouldn't it make sense to figure out how to capture some of that water and keep it around? At minimum, if we even discharged the water, you know, like, like, like overland release into natural areas or our own lawns, we would be recharging the aquifer. But, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of states where they, they use cisterns, they use rain barrels, a lot of things like that. And it just seems to me that we're actually missing an opportunity to give us, to keep something that Mother Nature gives us and instead, we're just shipping it back out to the ocean.
So that's actually a great observation and that was kind of the catalyst for some of the permit requirements from the state to require what's called low impact development compliance, which is basically a bunch of green infrastructure. And as you mentioned, there's some side design features like rain barrels, like the use of amended soils and birch etching planters and things like that that need to be incorporated as part of development to help do exactly that. One, reduce the use of water, but also whatever little runoff we do get, basically either recharge that if there is availability through the soil to do so or at a minimum reuse some of that for irrigation or something else. So that is now a requirement of all development projects that have to come through the city. There's a certain trigger in terms of acreage and things like that. But we should be seeing more and more of those features being incorporated into projects in the future.
You know, basically, all that's happened is that our home builders are not allowed to do green lawns anymore. And personally, I'd rather see a green lawn. It just seems, it just seems like we're missing an opportunity. We also, you know, we read in the planning press or Public Works magazines and I get the funniest group of magazines from Public Works as you can imagine. But, things like civic landscaping that is actually more of a detention basin on a small scale. There just seem to be an awful lot of options like that and we're not necessarily using them in California or at least in Northern California. And, and especially in this region, as long as we're gonna continue to use potable water to irrigate landscaping, it seems that we really ought to be trying and, and we've taken purple pipe out of our development standards, which I personally disapprove of. But as long as we're gonna use potable water to irrigate civic landscaping and personal landscaping, it just seems like there ought to be a better way to do it.
I agree a hundred percent and definitely something that we encourage as well. I also think now with the push of the state of water conservation requirements and the model water conservation ordinance coming down from the State Department of Water Resources, that's pushing a lot of developments to also do water, you know, efficiently steeping and that type of design. But it's definitely something that is one of our goals as well as we review development projects and we feel like the state regulations are moving in that direction.
I just, I just am concerned that California is gonna get to the point where they think about banning green parks and you can't play baseball on bark.
Yeah. You could use a big grass, I suppose, but not a lot of people like that either.
The dog likes it. Thank you.
All right. Any other council members? David?
Thank you for your comments there Linda. You know, I think it's sort of like a knee jerk reaction. Water is short, therefore we need to kill the lawn. The environmental analysis doesn't seem to actually matter in that case and there's a lot of bad effects from, from killing the lawn. Grass is awfully good at cleaning air. It's awfully good at reducing temperatures in neighborhoods that would otherwise, you know, those soils would probably be covered with rock or bark or something that, that would put off an awful lot more heat at the local level. Grass turns out to be terribly efficient at what it does. It even does, you know, enormous amount of carbon capture. So if you do a true environmental analysis, you wouldn't be tearing out the lawn. But that's, that's a bit of an aside from this discussion. You know, what I really hate are these concrete ditches. Just the whole nature of that offends me. It's probably because I grew up in a rural environment where a creek was a creek and there was no such thing as a concrete creek or dips like that. And we've, we've got these things just, in my mind, just like scarring our environment here. And they're sort of nothing but trouble. You know, they're not environmentally good. The water that runs through them that ends up in the river is too hot. All sorts of nefarious activity can occur in these fenced off corridors that are around these cement drains that we can never truly secure. I mean, it's not like you can have police officers constantly patrolling our drainage dishes, these cement drains behind, behind our houses in these inaccessible areas. But anyone who wants to get back there and do something nefarious certainly can. So my goal, and what I don't understand really is the finances for us around this. But my goal would be to find some higher and better use for those corridors or at least to, you know, to underground them, to turn them into a pipe. Because at some point, they're coming out of a pipe, turning into surface drainage. The question is, could we just extend the pipe further down that, down that corridor? And you could either return property to adjacent homeowners or make that area available for, for something else that's more secure and less, less onerous for the, for the neighboring property owners. So Dahlia, can you give us an idea about, about what our finances are like here? I mean, I heard you use some, some numbers in the presentation, but I don't have any sort of scope or any sort of understanding of annual revenues and our annual costs and, and what's actually available for capital investment in the system?
Yeah, great question. So through the Stormwater Utility Fund, we get about three million dollars a year, give or take. Obviously, it kind of depends on vacancies and things like that. But that's what we mainly use for operation and maintenance of our system. But we also do set aside some amount of money to do repair projects and, and smaller C I T projects. For the large scale ones, it would have to be where we identify other opportunities because it would be very difficult for financing for some of these projects. And unfortunately, we're not able to easily increase the rates like sewer and water can because of the requirements of the two eighteen and things like that. So we have very limited money that comes in each year. I think whatever little we have, we try to manage very carefully and use whatever we can to do repair projects. I think a project of that scale obviously potentially might be very costly and that would be a consideration as well as regulatory challenges. Just to give you an idea, just for us now to go into a creek section and remove vegetation and trash and some of that, we have to obtain permits and we have to do bird surveys and some other environmental surveys just to do that maintenance piece of it. So if we move forward trying to maybe realign a creek for something that's much more involved for sure. And that's why now you see more development projects actually not able to realign creeks or do any of that work anymore like we used to in the past because of the regulatory challenges. That's not to say, it's not something that we can consider. In fact, one of our goals is to identify opportunities where we have concrete line channels and the concrete is falling apart and that kind of a thing to maybe do something more creative as we address those channels. So maybe we can revitalize the channel, change the design so that it doesn't look bleak and, and paved. But it does, you know, require obviously a lot of funding. Some of that money can come through grants. We think Zone Eleven is gonna provide an opportunity, but Zone Eleven funds have to be mainly used towards basically making development happen and facilitating development. So there's certain areas where we can spend that money on. But yeah, financing and funding, I think, is definitely a challenge.
Go ahead Siri.
Hey, so you know they say the grass is always greener on the other side? That is so literally true for me. My neighbor has artificial turf and his grass is always greener. You know, and as much as I admire the fact that we do need natural grass, you know, I have brown spots in my grass and he is really green. So I have neighbors and me there. But my question is, you know, should I be in use of the neighbor that is actually using his artificial turf? Whereas I see people that are actually having a lot of water runoff. You know, they overwater their lawns to the point that you have water streaming down the driveways and walkways and it just overflows. So is there, should I be okay with the fact that, yeah, it's going into the natural creeks and streams or it's gonna evaporate? Or can we like put a fine or something to these homeowners that are wasting so much water in these times of drought especially?
Yeah, in fact, a lot of the water providers, obviously Forest is the city. We do not provide water, but there is multiple water providers within our city boundaries. And that's one of the things that they do do is enforcement on people who waste water. In fact, there is apps where you can literally turn in your neighbor and send in a photo of them, you know, wasting water off their lawn. And usually there is enforcement action that follows. So, and yeah, going back to the grass discussion, actually, there's very creative ways of doing water conservation without losing your lawn. You can still have your lawn, but there's certain types of grasses, like fescue grasses and things like that, that could be used, that use less water and still allow you to have kind of that green lush look. So I think it's just a matter of people maybe changing their idea a little bit about what lawns should look like. But there's definitely increasing enforcement from all the water providers to make sure that that type of waste doesn't happen again. And there's also some creative solutions now once the water actually makes it the local detention basin and some of that, how to better reuse that water from there. But yeah, it's gonna be definitely a change in culture and how residents are used to be in their lawns and landscapes and what expectations are.
So Cyrus, can I request those creative solutions be promoted, showcased? I'd like to see.
Absolutely, yes. In fact, you know.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I said I would like our city to be a leader in sustainability and being environmentally conscious and all of us are, so.
In fact, to that end, we have funded through community enhancement funds certain micro grants for residents to upgrade their lawns and make sure that we use water efficient systems. So those can be used as examples to showcase what you just talked about.
Yeah, I was gonna say, one of the first neighborhood engagement programs that Lori and her team worked on was it, it takes a Lincoln Village and it brought out the host of yard crashers to actually do demonstration drought resistant landscaping. It's been a few years though, but it was Ahmed, and I can't remember his last name, and he came and actually did like a luncheon and talked about, or breakfast and talked about doing drought resistant landscaping. And then I think we gave, yeah, we gave a couple of awards for it too, yeah. But it's been a while, so Siri, you're right.
And even our design guidebook had some design ideas for drought resistant and good landscaping, making sure that we use as many native plants as possible, some, you know, the, the right type of irrigation. You know, there's, there's certain things that our residents can do. In fact, in some cases, we, the city, have a contractor on board that helps the residents through the micro grants to make that happen, to actually showcase it.
And lots of palm trees, right? Those are drought resistant.
Those are the best trees to have in our neighborhood. Linda's not here, we're good.
No, don't comment.
So we're adding that to our standard for housing. All right, thank you team, we appreciate it.
Thank you Dahlia.
Thank you Dahlia.
All right, go ahead and kick everybody off and let's reset one more time. All right. Stacy, can you please read the next subject?
Item number nineteen point four is the communications update and strategic plan.
All right, Maria, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Maria Chikoneste, Communications and Public Affairs Director for the city. This evening, our city's communications team will be providing you with a look back at 2020 as well as high level plans for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. Next slide please. And this is a photo of our communications and public affairs team alongside a list of the three updates that we provide to you annually. In December of 2020, we presented the legislative update. This evening, we'll provide a communications update. And in August, we will present a community engagement update. Next slide please. This evening, we'll provide you with an overview of 2020 along with our successes and insights. Then we'll review fiscal year 2021 and 22 strategy and present a preview of our new website design for your feedback. Next slide please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Caesar Espinoza and I'm the Communications and Public Affairs Intern. Before we play you this video, it goes without saying, 2020 was very different compared to previous years. And while our city, residents, and businesses endured much, And while our city, residents and businesses endured much, there were some bright spots we wanted to highlight. We hope you enjoy the trip down memory lane.
This takes just a moment. It's coming, not to worry.
So despite the pandemic, there were a few things to celebrate in 2020 and a lot of work that was accomplished by city staff. It's always nice to review, uh, the positives. Before we dive into the communications data, here's a brief overview of the, um, city's communication goals and move to the next slide, please. So the city's communication goals, uh, are to provide mostly proactive communication support. We cannot, we can't account for everything that comes across our desk, but we try to be as proactive as possible in support of citywide goals, the city council's priority issues, and our residents and our businesses' needs. We also ensure that the city communications are strategic and meaningful and focused on our audiences, primarily our residents and businesses, and that the efforts are outcome-driven, measurable, and insight-focused using data and analysis of that data. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Danielle Hale, Communications Officer. Part of communicating effectively is gathering data, analyzing the data for insights, and course correcting where necessary. We measure virtually every aspect of our foundational communications as well as our media relations. Foundational communications are the tools we use to provide a steady drumbeat of news for our audiences, including digital newsletters, social media content, Facebook workplace, grapevine articles, city and city manager support, news monitoring, website management, billboard content, and digital lobby displays. Next slide, please. Positive news stories appear in the media in a variety of categories. This chart shows how many stories were generated by the city communications team in 2019 versus 2020. Although there were over fifty-four positive news stories per month on average, you will notice there was a thirty-three percent in decrease in stories in 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. There were six hundred and forty-eight positive stories in 2020 compared to one thousand four hundred and twenty-five in 2019. Next slide, please. This chart illustrates the page growth across the city's various social media channels. Nextdoor continues to be our channel with the largest reach and following, followed by Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. The highest-reaching posts across the city's channels were different for each channel. We use a different strategy for each platform to ensure we're maximizing our reach and engagement. We use an editorial calendar to ma- manage the content for each channel and to the extent that we can. We try to meet residents and businesses where they are on each platform to deliver them the content and information they want and need. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Ashley Downton, Communications Officer. In addition to the city's social media channels that Danielle just mentioned, we also have Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Nextdoor pages for the Rancho Cordova Police Department. We experienced a twenty-five percent average growth across these channels in 2020. While this chart shows the number of people who follow our channels, our content on Facebook reaches the most people, followed by Twitter, Nextdoor, and Instagram. Like the city's social media channels, we use a different strategy for each RCPD's social media channel to ensure we are maximizing our reach and engagement. When we analyze the most popular posts across the channels, content that did well across the board included stories on how RCPD partners with residents and businesses, stories about our officers that humanize the badge, and posts remembering or honoring fallen officers or team members. Other content that stands out, which are more channel-specific, are live tweets from the field on Twitter and quality of life incidents and public service announcements on Nextdoor. Next slide, please. Now we are transitioning to our digital e-newsletter. Rancho Cordova News, the city's monthly e-newsletter, experienced twenty-two percent growth in subscribers in 2020. This also includes a print newsletter that is mailed to residents who request it. In addition, the average open rate for this newsletter was thirty-six percent, which is well above industry standards. Next slide, please. RCPD's bimonthly e-newsletter, The Dispatch, experienced twenty percent growth in subscribers in 2020. While the launch of The Dispatch was a successful effort to kick off our proactive and strategic communications for RCPD, part of our role is to find efficiencies in our processes. Due to the fifteen hundred subscribers to The Dispatch in comparison to the four thousand for Rancho Cordova News, moving forward, we will be folding RCPD content into Rancho Cordova News versus having a separate e-newsletter. Next slide, please. Now we are transitioning to our website. In 2020, RCPD's website was visited around a hundred and sixty-seven thousand times. We experienced a spike in visits from April through July due to the incident we experienced and media statement on the website, which accounted for more than a hundred and eighteen thousand of these visits. When you remove this anomaly in website visits, which you can see reflected in this chart, the RCPD website experienced a steady growth of around eighteen percent in 2020. Next slide, please.
On the city's website, we had more than two hundred and eighty-nine thousand visits in 2020, a growth of almost forty-three percent compared to 2019. This large growth increase can be primarily attributed to the city's COVID-19 information and resources, the launch of Rancho Cordova Online, our Join the Conversation survey, and the Rio del Oro groundbreaking. Next slide, please. Due to the increase in website visitors seeking out information about COVID-19, this is a breakdown of the top ten COVID-19 webpages. In addition to the large amount of visitors to the main COVID-19 webpage, visitors also sent out free testing information, resources for residents, vaccine information, and resources for businesses. Next slide, please.
When we last reported to you, we set our 2020 goals, as you see here on this slide. We're happy to report, with the exception of media relations, which was preempted by the pandemic, we have far exceeded these goals. While media relations is down by thirty-three percent due to COVID-19, social media is up sixteen percent and twenty-five percent respectively. Digital content growth is growing at twenty-two percent and twenty percent. And whereas we thought we would just see steady visitor growth in 2020 on our website, we actually experienced a forty-three percent increase in visitors on the city site and an eighteen percent increase in visitors on the RCPD site. In 2021, our goal is to continue with ten percent year-over-year growth in media relations and social media, twenty percent subscriber growth for digital content, and with the pandemic waning, we would like to maintain steady visitor growth to the website. Next slide, please. The way to continue growth is to pay attention to our successes while also heeding what we're learning from our insights. So Nextdoor, as you've heard, is our highest-reaching channel at thirty thousand plus, with Facebook a second. Digital content, uh, our digital content audience grew significantly year-over-year, but is still a growth opportunity for the city. Our website saw high growth in 2020 and is the focus of a 2021 revamp. In addition, we are adding on very meaningful search engine optimization to maintain our new, unique visitors and continue with that steady growth. We'll continue to focus on campaign-type communications because they yield the most meaningful results, and some examples of that recently are COVID-19 and our crime is down in Rancho Cordova by sixty-one percent. We'll use our new marketing assets to support these campaign-type communications, and these are things like our COVID-19 fact sheets and videos, uh, new, uh, photography, our banner program, et cetera. Storytelling continues to be the most powerful tool that we have across our channels, but in 2021, what we learned was that there is a, very much a need to be a trusted source of information, which between the two is a very powerful combination. This tells us that our audiences trust and enjoy our information and we don't take that responsibility lightly. We also, uh, use communications and marketing technologies such as news and social media monitoring as well as search engine optimization to add accuracy and efficiency to our city's capabilities. Next slide, please.
Speaking of technology, we'd like to take a moment to talk about some of the new technologies we've integrated into the city's communications program that has resulted in greater accuracy and efficiency. Lexis Nexis is a news monitoring and aggregating service. Every time Rancho Cordova is mentioned in the news, we know about it. Talkwalker is a social media monitoring and analytics tool. It allows us to monitor conversations for misinformation across social media platforms, in particular during a crisis. This is a tool that we selected over ZenCity because Talkwalker is the Tesla of social media monitoring tools. It provides coverage in a hundred and eighty-seven languages across one hundred and ninety-six countries, over a hundred and fifty million sources, blogs, forums, prints, broadcasts, and more, access to over twenty social channels, review and streaming sites, and visual, audio, and text analytics across all media.
Siteimprove allows us to monitor website quality assurance and accessibility, track website analytics, and conduct search engine optimization. We look at metrics for these platforms on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis. These tools help us define our communication strategy to make goals a reality and get to our desired outcomes. We will provide you with a more in-depth presentation on this technology in the near future. Next slide, please. So every year, based on our data, audience feedback, and our own lens, we zoom out, so to speak, to determine the best strategic approach. This fiscal year, we will be doing several things on this front. First, we'll be expanding our city's education campaign model with new tools, which will test and analyze for their effectiveness. The first, and I know there's going to be a lot of excitement about this, um, is we're going to add a TikTok channel. We actually just added it today to build relationships with our youth. We're looking at integrating neighborhood-based, solar-powered, pedestrian-level signage that can be updated in real time. We'll be experimenting with influencer programs, specifically with our R-City app launch, and we'll be experiencing, uh, experimenting rather with podcasts. We'll also be building greater understanding of city effort by training all city staff with some messaging to make complex information easier to understand for our residents and businesses. Uh, as mentioned, we'll be revamping our website. We'll be giving it a more modern look and feel. It'll be easier to find information and, uh, update information, and as we mentioned, it will also have search engine optimization. We'll continue to promote key city projects that our city staff bring to fruition. We'll continue telling the story of Rancho Cordova, especially underscoring high interest in high priority areas, with the focus on that social contract of being a trusted and reliable source. And then, of course, we'll continue to measure and analyze program success and identify insights to make those strategic adjustments, to make sure that we're meeting the citywide goals and as well as our residents' and businesses' needs. Um, and then we have heard that the council might be interested in considering a print newsletter. Uh, we do, uh, e- we do mail our, our e-newsletter to about a hundred and twenty recipients, people who have asked for the, the e-newsletter to be mailed to them. Um, but happy to answer any questions now on what that might take, or we can consider it at the end of the presentation. We just have a few more slides to go through. Next slide, please.
We have a variety of projects that will be underway in the next few years, including exploring new tools and technology, Legacy Community Enhancement Fund and Measure R projects, the launch of the R-City app, crime decrease and traffic safety campaigns, a live, work, learn, play campaign, a website revamp, and the promotion of new city projects. Next slide.
So as was mentioned, our team is working on a new city website that will go live by the end of 2021. The new website will feature new designs for the city homepage, economic development, and interior pages. Tonight, we are excited to preview our new website design for you and want to gather your feedback. Next slide, please. On the left-hand side of this slide is our current city website design that was launched about five years ago. Using analytics, best practices, and team feedback, we created the new design that is on the right-hand side of this slide. The design really aims to be more user-friendly and efficient with a focus on providing information by target audience, and you can see that reflected in the website navigation across the top. In addition to highlighting stunning new photos of our city, the homepage features top visited and important content, which can be modified as needed and on an ongoing basis, as well as events and news. Next slide, please. We have also added a new feature to our new website homepage called Find a Service. This tool will allow our community to easily access information about and request city services at the click of a button. Next slide, please. On the left-hand side of this slide is the design for our current website internal pages. The right-hand side of this slide is a preview of our The right-hand side of this slide is a preview of our new website internal pages. These webpages are fully customizable depending on the topic and offer new features to display information, such as the buttons you see across the top. Next slide, please. About half of our website visitors are using a mobile device. The left-hand side of this slide shows our current website on a mobile device. Right now, our website automatically adjusts the pages you visit to the size of the device you are visiting in on. While our new website will continue to have this feature, we are creating a new mobile design specifically for the homepage that you can see previewed on the right-hand side of this slide. It will feature a new app-like experience with customizable buttons to match the homepage content. And council, we would also love to gather your feedback on this new website design. Next slide. That concludes our presentation, and we'd love to take any questions and discussion from the council or members of the public.
All right, so I'll start it off. First, let's see, hold on. Yep, I get to start it off. So first off, amazing job, guys. You, when I first got on council, the lone website and one posting that I was used to. You guys have come a long way. Your grasp of SEO, Facebook ads, social media, the right scraping tools, due to the fact that I work for a marketing company, is really impressive how you guys have really stepped up and started to engage. I really like the, you even took into account coloring and the SEO on the new website to make it easier for eyes to read, and you put it, made it mobile cable, which is very important when anything you're doing. And the only, you know, the most important thing is, is our communication to our residents has increased tenfold. And I really like the fact that you're pushing on the newer technologies to find that. So good job, amazing job, Maria. Ashley, you're okay. Danielle, great job. I was just going to go through each person and give them the good, no, great job to everybody. I'll go through the group. My comments are pretty much, the website, I love how you're starting to integrate it with the mobile, very important. I like the different coloring. I like how you pulled out the most important page, which is, we all know, the calendar. The only thing I would say is if you can find a way to integrate with our other partners to make it easier to find them, because when someone goes to look up what's going on in Little League, they don't always go to the RC-A-A page. Sometimes they'll go to the city page, and if there's an easy way to get to that, and the calendars, and to show when my son is pitching, always very important. The other thing is also, I didn't mean, I didn't say that. The other thing is tying in with the, you know, the most blocked page is calendars. And that's just the most important thing when it comes to all these sites. So I like how you prompted and put the calendar in the front with the agenda items that are going on. But if you could find a way to tie in with like the Chamber of Commerce and your guys' site and pass it back and forth, maybe with a, oh gosh, I've forgotten what the cool, is it built off of, what's the, what are we building the engine on the website on? Is it WordPress? Is it?
It's a content management system through Granicus.
Okay, if they have a good way to do a, some way to push back and forth and pull, that would be really clean, because if we could start showing the other things. Hold on a second. If we could show an RC-A-A or get the Chamber of Commerce and make them tie back and forth and pass, that would be super attractive, even if it was just a push or a pull and not, like, it's not editable, that still would be attractive to me. So, great job. I love all the stuff I'm seeing. Also, go outside yourself sometimes with marketing. I like you guys failing, failing real big and showing stuff like. And I do like the idea of sending out a newsletter to my older residents so they can see what's going on, because they're used to newspapers. And even though the newspaper has ended, I'm right now doing an article in the paper, and I get more comments from people in their sixties to eighties about what's going on from that. So I don't want to see that type of communication go away, because if there's a way that we can do it, that'd be great. All right, those are my comments. I will go to, you raise your hand, Siri. I'm not doing you. No, Siri, go ahead.
First of all, really, Maria, I'd like to congratulate your team on a really wonderful presentation. You exemplified yourself as a communication team on the flawless presentation, how you were moving from team member to team member, you know, without taking a break. That shows your communication style in terms of how you guys, you know, work together in order to bring the content out. So thank you for the wonderful presentation, and thank you for taking the time to put together such a wonderful presentation, because a lot of work goes in to making this fifteen-minute presentation. You know, the amount of hours and time and dedication it takes to put together. Nobody sees behind the scenes, but thank you for that. You know, and congratulations on the TikTok channel. Thank you for getting with the time. Our attention span is so short, you know, TikTok is a great venue. It is also a lot of time passed, you know, you get on it and it's hard to get off the TikTok channel. So, yeah, that's wonderful that you are on it. On the newsletters, we absolutely need to make sure that more people are aware, because, you know, four thousand subscribers is, you know, a really small number for the amazing content that they're missing out on, so that you know, got to see a lot more ways to see how we can increase that subscriber content. On sending, you know, yes, you know, it's a good thing that we're sending out the media newsletter as well. That's maybe not so much for the older community, because a lot of people, my mom, seventy-five, she's always online. You know, I don't think she reads the paper in print anymore. But, you know, it's for people who do like to read, irrespective of age, they do like to read their newsletters. I still subscribe to the manual newspaper, because I would really like to have that paper in my hands when I read it. So there's both sides of the spectrum. So it's great that we do have that option for getting a newsletter in the mail for people that do want to subscribe. You know, you're a small team. I mean, literally, there's you and interns that, you know, that you're working through. There's a lot of content that you guys are having to manage with having such a small and crisp team. So thank you for that. And my feedback is that you be open to taking feedback, which you are. So we've been getting a lot of feedback, and you guys are so open to taking that feedback, whether it's positive, negative, and putting it to good use, that that is something that I would absolutely commend you for and look forward to seeing that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Siri. Also, I'd just like to bring up, I would like to see more staff in the marketing department. I think you guys are overwhelmed because of all the new stuff you have to do. And just on a side note, to my council members, the best way to keep our marketing and our, and our, and our team going is to always inform them when you have amazing meetings and stuff going on. Because if they don't hear it from us, because we sit on all these agendas, then they don't know what's going on. So we want to make sure we're always telling them when we're doing something, going to something amazing, or doing something. We want to make a point to come to them, because they're able to take that and blast it out, not only show our constituents, but also show the region how amazing Rancho Cordova is. And on that note, I will ask Linda, what do you?
Well, I'm not, you know, there's no question that Garrett and Siri can completely out-talk most of us on any kind of tech, tech aspects. I mean, I know what, I've heard of TikTok, but, yeah, that's it. So, you know, my only concern, and certainly Ashley will remember that we've been through these website designs before. And, you know, sometimes our best efforts have just kind of crashed and burned. And so some of the things, the interesting thing is, I just on Thursday or Friday told Stacy how much I had come to really appreciate the agenda format that's on our website and the way in which you can access the individual agenda items. And so it's that kind of what I consider to be really user-friendly tool that I wouldn't want to lose. I really wouldn't want some of those things that worked so well to change. Not, not everything, not everything is broken. So not everything needs to be fixed. And from my perspective, that would be one that really doesn't need fixing. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Linda. Yeah, the agenda, the way the agenda is will not change. That'll just be carried over.
Wonderful. What I did notice is that on your phone, on that cute little page of all those buttons, there is one specific item for agenda and minutes. And Garrett, in terms of partners, I know that there was one specific button for fire. That just sort of jumped out. So maybe there's, you know, there must have been, what, sixteen different buttons? Really interesting.
And those buttons aren't finalized yet. It's just, it's, you know, some of them are, yeah. But we'll, we'll get more into the details. But we were, you know, really excited about the web design, and we wanted to get your feedback, so we decided to present it even before it's completely finished.
I like that. All right, before we go to David as our last one, Matt is able to test it. Stacy, do you want to pop him on real quick?
Sure. Matt, you'll have three minutes under public comment to speak.
Thanks very much. I was going to get into this big, long thing about transparency, but I feel like there's a component here that you've touched on that I'm just looking at the site myself, and I'm listening to what Linda is saying. And she is absolutely right about the links that are embedded. There's actually two ways to get to the council meetings, one of which provides all the notes that she's referencing. But then the regular page that includes the Zoom link and all the public comment, it's not there. So I absolutely agree that that's got to get merged. And we've had that issue for a long time about getting communication out. The one thing I'm going to say, being a community, whatever you want to call me, instigator, activist, whatever you want to call it, is that we've always had problems in the neighborhood groups trying to get the word out in a way that would reach the greatest audience. One suggestion I'm going to make to comms is to post and repost. I'll give you an example. Cyrus's event. I never saw that on Nextdoor. My wife saw it only because she was scrolling through some older posts. We didn't even know that was happening, because we, I think you may have only posted it once. And so posting and reposting is something. But the other big thing is, comms, get out into the community. Meet the neighborhood associations, meet the HOAs, figure out what they need from the website as much as what the business community needs and what you need for transparency. I think these neighborhood groups have a lot to tell, and I think it will help you drive where the site's going to go. And certainly trying to find a way to merge the links where we can easily get to council reports is such an important part of transparency. So I know I threw a lot out there, but Linda, you had a great point, and I wanted to make sure that everybody knew a practical way about how we try to reach the site for news and information. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. All right, and our last one is David Sanders.
Mayor Gatewood, if I could just, Mayor Gatewood, if I could just interrupt. We did have another public comment for this item. It was submitted via email and sent to the council and placed on our website, and it was from Faza Mogul.
Great. David?
Yes, well, as mayor last year, I just want to thank you guys for a tremendous year under enormously challenging circumstances. But the effort you put into and the success you put into the department's work last year, I think, was just exemplary. So you guys did a stellar job under all the pressures around COVID-nineteen. I just want to publicly congratulate you on that. All your successes there, and then the metrics you just showed are pretty amazing for last year. It's actually a little hard to understand how you might be able to move that needle ten percent up from what was just an extraordinary, you know, amount of attention last year. You know, that, that website you put together, as part of our website, with COVID-nineteen resources that I bragged on constantly as the best resource out there for anybody to look at with regard to like an index or a central location for COVID-nineteen information. That was awesome. But do you really think you can, you can sort of top those numbers for, for this year when, when we don't have that sort of a crisis, you know, God forbid, on the horizon?
Well, I think, I think we can. I think we're going to, we're definitely going to try with some of our new tools and some of the content that we're going to be pushing out. I don't think we can get forty-three percent again on website growth.
Let's all calm down with that. Hey, 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 what are you trying to say? Is his mayorship better than my mayorship? Because he's able to grow forty-three percent. I see what's going on here.
I wasn't going to go there, Garrett.
You know what, that's, man, man.
Come on, Garrett, he went there. You got to do it.
We're launching TikTok during your.
You know, I've been doing plenty of TikTok. I got that, the thing, the thing. Oh, man, you don't, you don't even know. David doesn't got my moves. We're going to, we're about to do some stuff.
Tik and talk, Tik and talk.
The short answer, Councilmember Sanders, is we are going to try.
Good. That's a good attitude, Deb. So on the, on the website, and, you know, you must get so many comments from us and from other people saying, well, what about this? What about that? What about this? I view it as almost an impossible task to get completely, like, right everything that people want to know on the website. Just, oh, gosh, within the past two weeks, I attempted to find in our ordinances the direct reference to how much of your front lawn can you pave? I knew the answer was forty percent, but I wanted a reference to that in the ordinance. I searched every way, and I'm pretty good at that. I searched every way I could come up with to find that through our website and never was really able to find it. Mainly, I found references like the Good Neighbor Guide and things like that, but nothing that was sort of specifically doing it. And I went to the Civic Code site specifically, looked at the city's code, eventually found it by scrolling and reading, but the search thing just totally failed on that. And, you know, I could probably come up with twenty topics like that. It would really be problematic. Do you see, and we've talked about this for a while, do you see any real hope on the horizon for smarter search for civic enterprises like ours? Or is this just, are we just mired in stuff? Because what happens is, it's a dumb search, right? You put words in there, and it'll find those words, but it's totally out of the context of what you're looking for. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, that is, that is the feedback that we've received in the past. And I think the team has been working really hard to, rather than try and account for every type of search term, we're attacking it in a different way, and that is trying to think like the end user and come to it in a more intuitive approach. So as Ashley had mentioned, we have, the top navigation is all about audience. And so based on who you are, are you a resident? Are you a business? Are you looking for an experience in Rancho Cordova? You can search that way. We have a new search tool that is far more robust than anything we've ever had. And actually, let's go back to that, that slide if we can. Is that possible, Persephone, for us to go back to that slide so Councilmember Sanders can see the Find a Service? And then I just want to mention one other thing. We looked at the metrics on the website to see where, what is the heat map showing? Where are people going mostly? And those are the big buttons that you see that are white right here. If you, you see these buttons, those are the ones where people are going mostly. And then we've got our events and our news, which are also of high interest. If you can advance the slide, let's see, I think just two more slides. There we go. Find a service right here. Ashley, I don't know if you want to speak to this. You've been more involved in, in this Find a Service.
Absolutely. So our goal is to make this more robust. Right now on the website, we have a dropdown that lists just a handful of services. So we're hoping to really do a full-fledged inventory of what people are looking for on the website and be able to integrate into that, so it, it makes it just easier versus using the, the search bar. I will also note that, you know, I took a note down about the city code site. There are other components that are integrating through the site, and those are not searchable by a website search engine. So it's getting creative and finding other components and areas that we can put those so we have a robust search wherever, wherever you're going to find that information.
Can I second that, please? I so agree with David. It depends on the question that you ask or the words that you use. And I've never been on anybody's search, including an awful lot of retailing, that if you put in just a couple of. that if you put in just a couple of words, that you ever get what you were looking for, because it didn't agree with your words. Or it found three hundred thousand references to that one word, you know? So that, from my perspective, that really is a critical aspect.
Yeah, and some of that goes to us studying the data and what are our visitors to the website looking for. And so we've, we've spent a lot of time with our consultant and our vendor looking at what that looks like and trying to design a website that takes into account a lot of different ways that, that the end user would be looking for information, whether that's through, you know, if it's audience, you know, I'm a resident and I'm trying to find something, or I know what I'm trying to find, and it's one of the top five things that we're looking for. Or if I don't, I can go to Find a Service, and there are three different ways that I can search for it. So we're trying to account for everything, but, you know, again, as you both have mentioned, it's really difficult to account for every single thing. But we are doing our best to create something that has a cleaner look, a more modern feel, you know? And, you know, we launched our website, our current website, you know, five or six years ago. And in five or six years, the needs change. So, you know, you launch something and it works for a while, and then, and then you have to, you know, take a look at it and see what needs, what you need now. And so that's, those are the things that we're focusing on.
That sounds like a good approach, Maria. I think the idea of looking at, as you call it, the heat map, or looking at things that people have searched for, you know, over years, and sort of summing those up, you know, you could have, you could search for water, you're trying to get a, trying to find out, do I need a water heater? Do I need a permit to replace my water heater? So if you're trying to answer that question on our website, and you put in water and heater, I don't know, currently, you'd get all kinds of random stuff, probably. But if this were Google and you had infinite, you know, processing, they could make the assumption that, oh, well, that person most likely is trying to figure out, you know, do I need a permit for a water heater, even though they never mentioned permit? You know, that, that sort of intuition into it. So I think one way is to look at all those old searches, the heat maps out, whatever you want to call it, and, and sort of fill in the blanks, right? Say, this is what they're looking for.
Right, because they, you know, they don't know what our terminology is, and we can't expect them to know what that is. And so we have to approach it in a number of ways, and also it needs to be intuitive to a certain degree. So, so that's, that's what the team's working on. It is a big, big project, but it's, it's also pretty exciting. And, you know, we appreciate the feedback. I don't know that we got Donald's feedback.
He's good. Okay.
Garrett, if no, if no one else has done this, this is a business opportunity for somebody, because every city is gonna have very similar questions.
Right, I agree, I agree. So, thank you, guys, amazing, great work. Work on the stuff I talked about, everyone else can be on the back burner, just make sure. All right, at this point, I would like to ask if any of my councilmembers have any future agenda items they'd like to bring up? Seeing none. Linda, what was the name of the gentleman you wanted to end the meeting in?
Dell Haven.
Yeah.
I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Dell Haven, Rancho Cordova, through and through. And at this point, I'm going to go, we're all going to go into closed session.